Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Milford School Board Meeting for Monday, February 15, 2021. The time now is 7:04 PM. We will open the meeting by roll call. Mr. Saint Ange?
Here.
Mrs. Zano? Oh, she's frozen. Mr. Vituli?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Holly Talapa is present, and I believe Mrs. Zano is having technical difficulties and will be joining us shortly. Oh, there she is, Mrs. Zano.
You're not moving much.
I'm here.
Okay, so we officially open the meeting. Any motions on the table?
I motion to seal the minutes.
I would like.
From the non-public.
I second that motion.
By roll call, Mr. Vituli?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mrs. Zano?
Hi.
Mr. Saint Ange?
Hi.
Holly Talapa, aye. The motion passes to seal the minutes, 5-0. So at this point, we will go directly to item one, which is the consent agenda. And I think that we're going to make a motion to move the approval of minutes from February 1 to the next meeting due to the fact that there are a couple of question marks where the motion was made and seconded. So a motion to move that to a future meeting.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zano. Yes. Okay, by roll call, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Saint Ange?
Hi.
Mr. Vituli?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mrs. Zano?
Hi.
Holly Talapa, aye. Motion passes 5-0. Judy, did you want to make a motion to approve the manifest?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the manifest that are listed.
Seconded.
Open for discussion? By roll call vote, Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mrs. Zano?
Hi.
Mr. Vituli?
Hi.
Mr. Saint Ange?
Hi.
Holly Talapa, aye. Motion passes 5-0. We'll now go to public comment. So this is a little different. It's a new system. You will need to raise your hand if you want to be called on. And you will be unmuted to speak. And we're learning this, so. The first hand I see up is Peter Petrino.
Oh.
So. Let's say. I am hovering over Mr. Petrino, Jerry, but nothing's happening.
Click on the more.
Click on the more.
Hover over and click on more? Are you seeing that?
No. No, but where Peter's name is more?
Yes.
I don't. I just see Peter with his hand.
Okay, then it's not giving you the rights to do it. I'm going to allow him to talk. You'll have to tell me to do it.
I don't have any rights, sorry. Hi, Mr. Petrino. If you could please introduce yourself and state your address.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
We can hear you now.
That's fantastic. Well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Peter Petrino. I live at 34 Shady Lane here in Milford. I'm one of Milford's state representatives. So I'm here this evening because I understand that on your agenda tonight, you folks will be discussing House Bill 20 and House Bill 607. So I wanted an opportunity to just share a little bit of my insight on those two pieces of the legislation and how they will affect the Milford School District. So, House Bill 20, and again, I'm sure that you folks may be somewhat familiar with the legislation. There was public hearing already. The time for public testimony has passed. Tomorrow, the House Education Committee will be voting in executive session on House Bill 607. And then the following day, they'll be voting again on House Bill 20, making their recommendations to the full House of Representatives. House Bill 20 is referred to as the Dick Hinch Educational Freedom Account. It's named after the former speaker who passed away a few weeks ago from COVID. And the whole idea behind the Education Freedom Account is to transfer the state adequacy aid into a scholarship fund, which parents can then apply to, and they can use that money for any qualifying costs for various educational services that may be out there. So when the student leaves the school district, they take with them that state adequacy aid. On average, it's roughly $4,600. And that is pretty much what House Bill 20 is all about. House Bill 607, somewhat similar, it would create a local educational savings account by which the superintendent, using a special formula, would take a look at the total school budget raised from local property taxes and using a formula, then determine how much money would be taken from the school budget and applied to a savings account. And again, if a student opted out of the Milford School District, they would also take that money with them. And that pretty much is the essence of the two pieces of legislation. Now, I want to just say that I've been in education for 40 years prior to entering the legislature. 19 years in private school and 21 years in public school, so I'm well versed in both the benefits, the strengths and weaknesses of both private and public education. Personally, however, I really believe that these two pieces of legislation, it's a death blow to public schools. That is pretty much my perception. Number one, I see this as a loss of revenue for the town. We're going to lose state adequacy aid, and of course, we'll be dipping into local property taxes as well. Some people will argue that.
Mr. Petrino, I'm sorry, you are at three minutes.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Well, let me just very quickly say then, a loss of revenue, and I'm happy to answer questions and go into more detail. A loss of revenue to the school district, okay? Equity is a major, major concern. And lastly, there's no oversight at all. So basically, students can go to any school and use the money for anything that they want. I'd like to get into more detail, but I apologize. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your comments.
You are welcome.
So I think I will need your help, Jerry, because I think I signed in under an improper setup.
Just tell me who you'd like to allow and I'll.
Sure. So next up, I see Marsha Brew.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Marsha Brew, 11 Foxmore Circle. I just wanted to take a moment and ask that you consider raising the sub-rate pay per day. I'm hoping it can be a comparable amount with the surrounding towns. Milford is at $75 per day, but our surrounding towns such as Hollis Brookline is at 100, Amherst is at 150, Wilton is at 120. We have lots of consistent subs and dedicated subs in the district that would love to stay subbing and working in our town. I hope with this being considered, we may gain more substitutes if the rate was increased. Thank you.
Thank you. So Jerry, both the first and second speaker still, Mr. Petrino seems to still have his microphone on, but next up would be Boden Zaritsky.
I left his on in case he needed to comment.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Boden Zaritsky. I live at 124 Melindy Road. I'm just a little confused as to when we're going to be making plans to have school be more in-person, full-time activity. As far as I understand, the CDC is put together suggestions that full-time, in-person school is considered safe. I haven't heard anything further, nor have I seen anything about surveys or requests from the school board to understand what our, what parents' wishes would be. I'm very concerned about the children continuing to lose educational opportunities. In fact, to me, the the remote classes where the teachers were alive and they were having classes daily seemed to work better than what we've got now, where the kids are getting two days of schooling, basically. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time?
I have a public comment.
Admin is not me.
Hello?
Someone saying they have a public comment. I don't see any other hands. And again, Jerry, I don't have the ability.
The only one I see is one called admin. That is not me.
Oh, admin.
Hi, sorry. This is Jenny Sigrist. It's my work computer. I'm sorry. Jenny Sigrist, Osgood Road. My comment is that first I see on the agenda today, there's a mental health response update, which is listed under old business, but I can't find this item on any previous agenda, so I'm not quite sure why this is now considered old business. So that's, you know, you can address that when you address it. At the last meeting, Mr. Martin mentioned some problems with the superintendent search that's currently happening. And one was the miniscule pool of qualified candidates, and he stressed how minuscule that was. The second was the limited amount of time left, and the third were the issues that the district has currently and that are known widely. And these are things that have been brought up before many times. The steps required to solve a problem are first to acknowledge the problem exists and then to deal with the issues. The board has generally acknowledged that our district has had problems in the past, but still refuses to acknowledge that those problems still exist and what those problems are. And I think that, you know, considering that there have been repeated requests over the past several months for public Q and A forums with the board on a monthly basis that still remain unaddressed. It doesn't show that the board is really willing to work with the community if they don't actively seek to do some of this and find out from the community during these Q and A sessions what's going on. And it doesn't help that some of the current board members are kind of picking fights with the administration and putting them in a bad situation and then making public comments on local media and to the newspapers. And it just continues this cycle of destruction and problems, frankly. We need to end this, and the board needs to take an active role in addressing the issues that exist, enumerating them, and taking steps to end them. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other hands raised for public comment at this time. I do see Mr. Zaritsky, your hand is still up. Did you have a second comment? So at this point, it looks like public comment is concluded. We will now go to board member comment. Mr. Saint Ange?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've not been one to make board member comments over the last several weeks, preferring instead to get to the heart of the matters on our agendas. But at this time, I believe we, as a school community, need to take a step back and reestablish our priorities. Tonight, I'm challenging us as a board to identify our most important short and long-term priorities as a district. And I'll be making several motions to address some or all of these items during the new business segment of this evening's meeting and subsequent meetings. Our overarching priority, superseding all other matters, we must work towards restoring trust and respect by and between all stakeholders, including students, families, the community, staff, school board members, and the superintendent. Without trust and mutual respect, none of the issues facing our district will be able to be meaningfully addressed. To accomplish the restoration of trust and respect, I submit the following priority to-do list for your consideration. One, we need to hire a new superintendent, whether on an interim or a permanent basis. Dr. Hizenga voluntarily resigned in December, effective June 30. It is imperative that we put up new leadership in place to guide our district. I'm happy to see, therefore, that interim superintendent strategy is listed on tonight's agenda under new business. We need to do more than talk. We need to take action. Number two, we need to address staffing concerns. Both pandemic staffing and post-pandemic staffing issues need to be addressed. In the course of ongoing planning by the administration for full return to school, we seem to be hearing about staffing concerns as a possible impediment to full return. We need to address that. I'm happy to see that substitute pay is listed on tonight's agenda under new business. I understand that it is a competitive marketplace right now to secure substitutes, but beyond that, we need to address the larger staffing issues facing our district. Number three, we need to review and revise certain board policies that may no longer be relevant, and/or worse, do not reflect the way we here in the Granite Town expect this board and administration to conduct its business. I'm primarily concerned with four board policies, but I'm open to reviewing the entirety of our governing documents. Board Policy 2151 regarding board member use of electronic communication devices during school board meetings. Board Policy 2152, public comment process during school board meetings, specifically the limitation on commenting solely on items on the board's agenda during the meeting. I also think we can loosen up some of the strict timing standards set forth by a previous school board that seem to be far more concerned with controlling public comment than allowing public comment. Board Policy 2402, Section C, D, and E regarding staff conduct, ethics, additional standards of conduct and ethics. Policy is overly broad, vague, duplicates state law and regulation, and was adopted by a board that was seemingly bent on chilling comment and criticism coming from school employees that were simply trying to help the school board and the school community better understand the systems currently in place. I think we're better in this town than that. Number four, we need to step up our review of facilities, both for pandemic and post-pandemic planning purposes. Number five, we need to address the proliferation of right-to-know requests from the community and the attendant legal fees these requests cost. Five matters: superintendent leadership, staffing, board policy revisions, facilities, and proliferation of right-to-know requests and legal fees. While I'm sure other members of this board may have their own sense of priorities, and I'm open to discussing them, adding and subtracting some, I want to be very clear. I intend to start all public meetings for whatever time I may serve on this board with a brief statement of the status of at least those five priorities. I fully expect they will change and evolve over time. They should. But I believe it is important that we start piloting our own course and not allow crisis management to be the board's primary form of management. Only then, in my opinion, will we be able to restore and enhance trust and respect for the board in our district. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Saint Ange. Mr. Martin? You're on mute.
I actually have two separate comments. My first comment, and both of them relate to our last public meeting. I was very frustrated, quite frankly, with the way that meeting went. My first comment is I really, really encourage the board to follow our own policies. Public comment is geared for the public to make comments to the board, not for the board to answer questions, not for the administration to answer questions, and certainly not for the board or administration to argue with the citizen making the statement. I agree. There has to be a mechanism for a dialogue two-way. I fully support relooking, quite frankly, at the policy on public meetings. I don't see why people can't make a comment on something that's not on the agenda. And I agree, there needs to be a mechanism for a two-way dialogue. So again, my first comment is we have to follow our own policies. My second one gets specific to the nurses' presentation. Our nurses did a fantastic job, professional job. They were asked to come and give us an update on how they're dealing with COVID. And I appreciate Mr. Saint Ange driving, getting them in front of the board, because I found it very valuable. My frustration was not with the nurses' presentation, but like one of our citizens, I felt that some of the board questions were couched to get the response they wanted to justify the position that they may be taking to get students back in-person learning. In fact, one comment was, there's the fact. Well, I won't be on the board, I don't think, unless we make a decision before the middle of March, which I doubt. I would hope that the board does not make a decision on one fact, i.e. six feet social distancing. There are some other facts that this board owes it to the students of this town to make their decision on. The first one is we, as a board, are here to provide the best education for our students. We're not doing that now. This is fact one. It's not the teacher's fault. It's not the student's fault. They're not in a classroom in front of our qualified teachers. And every complaint I hear from almost every parent is, my students are not learning like they should be. So there's the first fact that the board needs to keep in mind. We're supposed to be providing the best education. We're not doing that. The second one is, we can't just look at social distancing. Okay, there are documented emotional and social impediments happening to our children because they're not in school. All right, I read this every day. CDC says it's critical to get kids back in the classroom. So you can't just look at a six-foot wall. You've got to look at all the facts. We've had more students in this state die of suicide since this pandemic than have died from AIDS. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to bring them all back and have them one foot apart. We have to. I asked for the administration to bring a plan in place, because quite frankly, I didn't see one. And the last thing I would want is for, on March 1, a miracle happens and COVID's really back and the state comes back and the CDC says, hey, you know what, as long as you're segmenting the classrooms, it's okay for the kids to be close together. And we wouldn't have had a plan in place. I mean, it's taken the administration almost two months to deliver a plan. So when the board is, comes to the point that they have to make a decision, I beg you, don't just look at a six-foot social distancing. Yes, is six foot safer than three feet? Absolutely. But 12 feet is safer than six feet. Why don't we just put one student in every classroom? That's safer than anything. You've got to look at everything. And given that the state and the CDC says the kids in the classrooms, they're safer in the classrooms than they are out working in shaws and playing on the basketball courts. I asked the board, when you come to make a decision, do not base it just on social distancing. Do it what's best for the students, considering their social, emotional, and academic issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other board member comments?
I have a brief comment. I just want to say that I wrote this out. A contingency plan is a proactive strategy devised for an outcome other than the expected and usual course of action. It's the opposite of crisis management, which is a reaction to unplanned events. It's a theory of risk mitigation, and an essential part of effective leadership is it mitigates events that could have catastrophic consequences. In mid-January, the Leadership Profile Committee expressed interest in hiring a search committee to facilitate the superintendent hiring process. Correspondingly, Mr. Martin duly noted and expressed concern that we don't have ample time to complete a full-scale search. The only resume we had received at that point was one candidate who was already on round two of interviews with another district. It became apparent that four months wouldn't be sufficient to conduct the in-depth search required to solicit the most viable candidates for this essential leadership role. Many superintendents plan to remain with their current districts to see through the COVID-19 pandemic. Others who are searching for new positions begin to do so during the summer months into the early fall. The typical search process timeline is nine months in a perfect world without a pandemic. Our staff, students, and community need and deserve a sense of calm and security. Rescinding Dr. Hizenga's resignation was never an option, as it was a mutually agreed-upon resignation. But it was apparent to me that we needed to have a contingency plan in place. We, as a district, need to focus on healing. We need to continue to work toward a full return to live instruction, whether that be a month from now, two months from now, or six months from now. It's essential that we continue to foster relationship development within the district and that we strengthen communications between the board and the administration. This was stated already, but trust is earned. Respect is a mutual principle, which creates an environment of shared goals and shared vision. And speaking of the sampling of building principals, administrators, teachers, and parents, one name came up to me again and again as an example of a respected leader who would be focused on relationship development. Contingency plans have to have action plans. Mr. Martin alluded to the fact that we need to improve our public perception and strengthen our internal operations in order to attract the most qualified and capable employees. I firmly agree with this. I also believe we need to provide consistency and support to our students and staff during this search process. As such, I firmly believe that appointing an interim candidate who has already earned respect would be a move in the right direction. This would enable the superintendent hiring committee to move forward with their comprehensive search. This would ensure we have time to create the most prolific leadership profile, attract the most qualified, optimal candidates, and work in tandem with an outside search committee to fully vet the top candidates. Six months from now, our hope is that we can actually hold community forums in person and have intensive in-person interviews with the most qualified candidates. I'm only one vote of a five-person quorum. Regardless of who is chosen as an interim candidate, we would assure the community that no preferential treatment would be granted to any candidate. Although I would have loved to be on the search committee from day one, I specifically excused myself so that others would have a chance to participate and to ensure that we didn't have a quorum of the board on the committee. I'm grateful to everybody that volunteered. Your role is extremely important, and we are optimistic with additional time. You will fully vet and ultimately recommend the most qualified candidates to the board for consideration. In closing, it's a huge commitment to be a member of a board. I thank each of my fellow members for their civic duty. The interim appointment is one of two major decisions facing us. The other is the return to school plan. I want to state on record, I am in favor of a full return. When I stated that the nurses gave the facts, I'm a very pragmatic person, and in my opinion, the nurses on the front lines gave the facts. If we, even when we, as a district, can accommodate a full return, I absolutely hear the parents. I'm a parent myself. Our children need to be in full-time schooling. Again, the nurses were invited to provide their perspective. I had no knowledge of what they would share. The superintendent had also asked each building principal to provide an update for the return to school planning process. We didn't control the facts. We simply reported them. The reality is, duly noted, staffing, busing, COVID caseloads, they all play a huge role in any return-to-school scenario. As does the ability to safely social distance. The CDC is recommending six feet. I know we've looked at a plan for three feet. That's a decision that the staff is going to have to seriously consider. We continue to implore the administration to work toward the ultimate goal, but we must recognize that many factors are simply beyond our control. As Mr. Martin pointed out as well, I would like to apologize for engaging in Q and A during the second period of public comment at our last meeting. The board is tasked with making difficult decisions based on all available data and analysis of that info. During trying times, emotions and circumstances certainly impact us all. As I stated at the last meeting, every person on this board is a human being with a family and a life outside of our role on this board. We continue to fulfill our civic duties to the best of our abilities, and we thank the residents of this community for your patience and understanding.
Mrs. Zano?
Yeah, I have a, I honestly thought someone else was going to touch on this, so I don't want to spend a lot of time. But I received an email this week about the fact that the board is meeting on Zoom meetings. And, you know, we're talking about sending our kids back to school or, or our kids being in school, and yet somehow the board is taking refuge in the Zoom meetings. And I wanted to speak to that for just a moment. I personally, if I had my brothers, would rather meet in a room with my colleagues and with the public. That would be my first choice. So I found it, sort of in this thinking process, I found that we got, everyone on the board received the same really nasty emails about the fact that we were doing the deliberative session in person. How dare we do this? This limited the opportunity for people to be able to participate safely. And we got those. And then we get another email saying, how dare, when we had in live person, school board meetings, how dare we do that? When we had in-person meetings, we would have at most 20 people sitting in the mini auditorium at the high school. I look down at my Zoom, down here on the bottom, and I'm seeing 168 participants. There is no place that we could meet where 168 people could be present. We don't meet via Zoom because we don't want to meet by, because we don't want to meet in person. We could pretty safely meet in person. What we can't do is we can't make a safe environment for 166 people. That we can't make that safe environment, and that's why we choose to continue to meet in Zoom. And I think we still need to have another discussion about that as time goes by and we make different decisions. But we get this mixed message, and I just mentioned that to a friend of ours today, a friend of mine today, and said, we, we clearly can't please everybody. That's just not humanly possible, and so we have to do what we believe is right. And I think that that's what we're doing. I think we're making it available for everybody who wants to participate in the meeting, whether just to listen or to have their comments heard. And so doing a Zoom meeting and a live meeting at the same time really was incredibly difficult and not, I don't think it was good for anyone. So I just sort of wanted to put that out there. And I also, while I know we don't do response, I really do believe that we need to put that Q and A issue on a future agenda. I think that people would like us to answer questions. I mean, I can see how fraught with issues that would be. Sometimes we don't have the answers. And sometimes we don't have the answers people want. And that makes them frustrated and angry. And so I think there are lots of things we need to consider, but we certainly need to consider being able to answer questions. And I think that there, there are other ways of addressing that that we still need to get better at. And so I think that that needs to be a topic for future, for a future meeting. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Vitale, you're on mute.
Hi, good evening. I have sat back and haven't said much publicly about the return to school plan. As a teacher, who is a remote teacher, I support 100% all children back in the school at full time. We've heard from the administration, all the issues, the problems of doing it. I say we don't need, I'm tired of hearing the problems. Solve them, get them back in. I want the positive area. We talked about the six feet. Well, my school has been doing it all year long. Any student that wants to be full-time is full-time in the school. Been that way all year. They do make, do the CDC guidelines. They do it as well as they can, but they don't meet all of them. But the kids are doing fine, very few issues, and they're getting the education of in-person, which is so much better for them, both academically and emotionally. And as for talking about the Q and A, I know when we were running, I was running for office, Mrs. Zano were running for office, we had discussed that one time, that we would hope to have a Q and A session, maybe once a month or whatever decision. But that's something the board should discuss and set up. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all my fellow board members. And now we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairwoman. First of all, I just want to say I'm glad everybody is home safe. It is very icy out, and we're going to be getting some very inclement weather over the course of this evening. I just sent an email calling for a two-hour delay tomorrow, so I just want to make that public to everyone. Check your emails. Unfortunately, I'm on this board meeting, so I can't do a call. But I'm going to see if I can enlist my principals to help me get the word out via Blackboard Connect. But what this means is that tomorrow, there will be no AM session for the elementary schools. The middle and high school will both start two hours later than their regular start times. You will get a phone call from me in the morning only if we cancel and have a regular snow day. So if there's no call in the morning, that means that we will report to school for PM elementary session, and we will report to school for the middle and high school two hours later than regular start times. Okay? There is an email in your boxes that outlines that right now. I'm hoping that the ice will melt and the roads will be treated in time for a two-hour delay. If not, we will cancel and have a traditional snow day. Okay? A couple of just really great announcements. I just wanted to say congratulations to Frank Zidias. He was named the 2021 Educator Co-Recipient for the Aspirations in Computing Award, which recognizes educators in New Hampshire that support female students interested in technology. We also want to congratulate Victoria Coronaro and Kaylee Wilson for receiving the AIC Rising Star Award. And this is really exciting to see our young women being recognized in the areas of technology. And so we hope more and more students from Milford are going to win such awards in the future. We also want to congratulate David Sixson, Sr. at MHS, who has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist, which is just awesome. And I just want to send out a big shout out to our Facilities and Maintenance Department. I don't know how widely known it is, but they completed 18 projects over the last year. Our director has been highlighted on LinkedIn, and today he showed us an awesome spread, you know, highlighting the great work of his department. But already, he shared with me today that many of these projects, particularly our new boilers and our new LED lighting, are already seeing efficiencies. So I just want to say, great work, Bill Cooper, great work to your department, Facilities and Maintenance. You guys all rock, and gals. And so I just want to say a very special thanks to all of you. And that is my report, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we move on to new business. First on the agenda is an interim superintendent strategy. Mr. Martin, you are on mute.
Okay. In order to frame the discussion on this agenda item, I would like to make the following motion. I move that our superintendent's search be modified to target a July 1, 2022 start date, and that the school district hire an interim superintendent for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second that motion.
Should I speak to my motion?
Sure, open for discussion.
I, I won't go through everything that I said last week. I will if, if people need me to restate it. I am firmly convinced, after my discussions with the Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, that this is absolutely the right thing to do for Milford. It will give someone a chance to get the house in order, I believe, is what Carl Lad suggested in his discussion with me. And it'll give us more time to hire the most qualified superintendent that we can get.
So as I said during my statement, I also fully support putting an interim in right now. I think that we need it for stability. I think that we need it to provide a sense of calm for the students and the staff. I did reach out to Human Resources to find out if we had any internal candidates who would be qualified with their superintendent certification. There were two on staff, and we reached out to each, and there was one that expressed interest in pursuing this position. That candidate would like to pursue it if the board so chooses to move forward with an interim. And again, I think that one of the reasons that we don't want to rush to bring somebody in from the outside is because we want to make sure that we vet, that we fully vet before we choose the candidate. Getting someone in who can pick up and hit the ground running is really important. Do we have any other discussion before we vote? Go ahead, Judy. Mrs. Zano?
Yeah, I, I will, because it's personnel matter, I will be really cautious. But I reached out to the other person who was qualified to be the superintendent and was impressed, impressed with the reaction. And so we can talk more about personnel. But I do believe that we have two highly qualified people already in our district, and so are in many ways probably more blessed than, than shorthanded. I mean, I think we, we certainly have the resources. I would, yeah, I guess, I know it's not in your motion, Mr. Martin, and I'm not sure how within the rules I am by saying that I am really uncomfortable with looking outside the district. Really uncomfortable with that. So I know it's not actually included in your motion, but I, and, you know, we can talk about that later. Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Judy, I absolutely agree with you. I think it would behoove the board to interview, if we have two staff people already certified to be a superintendent, and they are in fact both interested, the board should interview both. Having gone through this in my BA career, for a short one-year stint, you're always much better off to have, give it to someone internally, providing they're qualified, than trying to bring someone in from the outside. So I, I agree with you. I don't think we need it in the motion, because that would then become part of a hiring process that those discussions would have to be done in non-public.
Any further discussion? Mr. St. Odd?
I, for one, am glad that we're having this discussion in a public forum. I don't think that discussing this in a non-public session would have been appropriate at all. I think that it's appropriate for, the one word I really dislike is transparency, but I understand the concept. I think for transparency purposes, having this discussion in this way makes total sense. I also agree with both Mr. Martin and Mrs. Zano and, and Mrs. Talapa that if we have a candidate or candidates within the district, their familiarity with district operations, I think, on an interim basis is very valuable to us. I just question, I have a question for, for you, Mr. Martin, with respect to your motion. You, you've indicated a start date of July 1, 21. I wonder if you would entertain allowing an interim superintendent to perhaps start sooner so there, there's an overlap period with the current superintendent for training purposes, resource purposes, and the like.
I don't think that needs to be in the motion. I, I would hope that, assuming one of our internal candidates was qualified and chosen by the board, that Dr. Hesinger would be working with the interim superintendent. That's one of the values of, of having someone internally. I'm sure Jessica's plan isn't not to help her replacement and then just leave on July, on July 1. I don't think it needs to be in the motion, but I think the expectation would be that this would give the interim an extended period of time to, to work with the current superintendent in order to, you know, be up, basically be able to start the ground running on July 1.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And just so everyone knows, the superintendent has expressed her interest and desire to definitely be a part of that process and knowledge transfer, et cetera, so. So if there are no further comments, we will do a vote-by-role call to hire an interim candidate. Mr. Vitale?
Aye.
Mrs. Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. St. Odd?
Aye.
Polly Talapa is aye as well. The motion passes 5-0. Mr. Vitale?
I just want to reiterate that what we had talked about, that this interim does not get an advantage or anything like that, will not be offered a contract for a permanent, that this will be an interim, and it will end within, within 12 months.
Yes, so I think that the next step of the board would be to reach out to the two internal qualified candidates for interview purposes and to meet with the administration and sort of discuss and look at what that process would look like. And it would clearly be in any interim contract, that this is an interim contract only. It would no way, shape, or form ever turn into any other type of contract, and that any candidate who wishes to apply for the full-scale position must apply through that process. And my expectation is that Mrs. Zano and Mr. Vitale will move forward with the Leadership Profile Committee when and as circumstances allow. Perhaps you could give us an update on that, Mrs. Zano?
Yeah, we're sort of constrained by, by Zoom meeting. There's no way to have a Zoom meeting with 20 people and allow others to. I mean, we could do the webinar format, but it's, the other part is that we can't break into smaller groups to do discussion. So it's a technological issue. I don't think it's a long term. I think after we get things, I think when we can meet in person, which I'm hoping is like sooner rather than later. But I'm still sort of trying to iron out some of the kinks on how we can make this happen. And if I can make it happen, I will. I spoke with a member of the committee today who was like, are we going to hear something soon? And I said, I'm still sort of working out the kinks on legislation and, and how open we need to be and how to successfully do that. So we are, I mean, I don't think the committee is gone. I just, I think there are other things we need to talk about as well in that process. So, but I don't know that it's going to matter so much if we end up with an interim. It's going to give us, it's going to buy us a little breathing room.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is House Bill 20. So Mr. Petrino spoke to the House bill. I don't know if any school board members have any statements they would like to add to that. Mrs. Zano?
Yeah, I have, um, on a personal level, I guess, I already made my personal choices clear with my elected representatives, my elected senator, and heard back from almost all of them, and, and had another email today that spoke to, I had read a great deal about one side of this issue and couldn't find a great deal of information on the other side of the issue. But today, I'd like to thank Bill King for sending me a link, which I shared with my fellow board members so that we could get a somewhat more balanced. I guess we got, we got to see both sides. And I think that, that was important. And I think as Mr. Petrino pointed out, the committee is hearing HB 20 on Wednesday and 6:07 tomorrow. And so really registering, registering the position of the board isn't going to have a great deal of impact at this particular juncture. However, I also feel that it's really important that as a school board, we make a public statement on our position on both of we make a public statement on our position on both of these bills. And I, after reading through both sides, I feel really strongly that the board should come out in support of each, excuse me, in opposition to HB 20 and HB 607. And I guess I was thinking about Mr. Martin saying you have to frame a motion in a positive way. And so I don't know quite how that could be accomplished, but I'm sure that we could do it. I do feel pretty strongly that HB 20 and HB 607 would make it difficult for us to have secure finances in our town. The state has already decreased our funding. We have, I, I mean, I think that finances are always a struggle. And I, I feel very strongly about the opposition to these two bills. But I do feel that we should be making a statement as a board, if for no other reason than to make a statement. It's, I don't know how much impact it has the day before votes or the day before committee votes. But I do feel strongly that we need to make a statement. One of the figures that I read this week from the New Hampshire School Board Association was that there had been over 5,000, a little over 5,000 people who publicly stated their opposition to this bill and a little over 1,000 who had stated their support of, of both of these bills. And so I feel that it's, I feel that the public feels strongly and that that support, as well as my own research, have brought me to believe that we should oppose them. So thank you for hearing my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zano. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I, I have real concerns with the bill, whether you're for or against vouchers or anything. Right now, the bill is fatally flawed, the way it's being sold. I was in a conference call with the Department of Education last Friday. And it appears the commissioner is providing financial information that quite frankly would suggest for every student that chooses to go to a private school, the district's going to save $3,000. And what, the way he apparently calculated that number is he took the adequacy aid and then subtracted 500 of that because of the adequacy and assumed that the district was going to save $3,000. That is a fatal flaw. We could lose 10 students in every grade. You're not going to cut a teacher with that. You're not going to cut a butch with that. You're still going to have to have a principal. So I think, I'm hoping that when the financial impact of that bill comes out, a lot of people will see that it is flawed. My concern right now, however, is there are lots of people who see private schools going back to school full-time and public schools not. And I, I had one person at Deliberative who would never support vouchers. And that person came up to me and says, I'm ready to support it just because I want my kid in school. And if I have to send him or her, because I, I'll do a voucher. So I, I think, yes, we need to speak against it because right now, the way it's being sold financially, it's flawed. But I also think we, we who support public education need to be able to do what the private sector is doing. I mean, parents want kids in front of teachers.
Mr. Saint-Andr?
Love that my colleague, Mr. Martin, never misses an opportunity to make that plug about full return. That's awesome. I love your, I love your advocacy. You and I absolutely disagree and that's okay. But I love your continued advocacy and dogged determination. And we'll reach that issue a little later tonight and certainly over the, in the coming weeks. But as to this issue, to me, the most important people that need to speak to this issue is not the school board. It's the voters of the town of Milford. And they do that by communicating with their legislators and their state senators. They're the people that need to be heard the most on this issue. Not what one board or several boards in the state have to say about a capital P political issue between Democrats and Republicans. Let the voters, in my opinion, reach out to their state senators and their state legislators and vocal, and vote, you know, voice their, their, their opinion there. I, I don't think the school board needs to take a position on that. I'm absolutely an advocate for public education as well. Public education is a, an evolving, has an evolving definition in, in our current times. And so I'm not prepared to, to vote in favor of this board taking a position one way or the other on the bills. My recommendation is encourage our, encourage our constituents to, to, to voice their concerns and voice their positions with their, with their, with their legislators and senators. Thank you.
No other comments? So next on the agenda is another, Mrs. Zano?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion. I would like to, and Mr. Martin, I'm sure you can help me with this, but I'd like to make a motion that the Milford School Board stands in opposition to both House Bill 20 and House Bill 607, both of which would harm the finances of public schools.
I second it.
Open for discussion?
Judy, for the sake of the people listening in, do you want to let them know what 607 is?
Oh, I'm sorry. 607 would allow basically a small number of people, thanks to, um, it would allow a small number of people to petition of, and put, petition the board and put on the ballot that as, basically a savings account would be set up with town funds that people could access for educational opportunities. And it is, again, there's no oversight on this and it would take a percentage of money away from the public school budget and would give access to people to be able to, I mean, to do something as simple as buy a computer or, or take their kids on a trip that they thought was a great educational opportunity. But it would take that money out of the public sector, put it into a separate account and again, siphon money off. I think that's the, the broad overview.
Thank you for your advocacy.
Oops.
Any further discussion? Kevin?
Yep, just to be clear, Judy, I'm going to vote against the motion, not because I have any real strong position for or against the, the legislation as written, but simply on a procedural basis, I don't believe that it's appropriate for the board, school boards all over the state, much less this one, to really be taking a position on this matter. Let, let the legislation, let the legislators deal with this. I'm not sure that we need to lend our voice to that discussion. Be that as it may, I, I do appreciate why you're making the motion and I understand your advocacy as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I am, I, I respect that Kevin, but, Mr. Saint-Andr, but I also feel that this is going to impact us very directly as a board. Should this pass, this will be, our budget next year will be impacted. And that's why I feel like we, that's why I feel that the board needs to make a statement.
Any other comment? And I just want to echo Mrs. Zano's statements that I feel personally, from my perspective, that one of our goals is to provide an adequate education for all of the students in the district. And my fear is that especially 607, if it passes, the ability to do so will be impacted and that it will not enable equitable education for all the students in our district, which is the primary reason that I would support Mrs. Zano's motion. So if there are no further comments at this point, I will call for roll call vote. Mr. Vituli?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
I'm going to vote aye because I firmly believe the bill as drafted is not a good bill that would significantly increase local property taxes. So my vote is aye.
Mr. Saint-Andr?
Nay, for the reasons previously stated.
Mrs. Zano?
Aye.
Holly Talapa is aye as well. The motion passes four to one. So I don't think we need to cover 607. We covered both. And I believe, I, I see there are hands up, so just please note, anyone that has your hand up, that we will be having a second section of public comment, at which point you can address your concerns for the new business issues. The only other new business issue that's not on the agenda, and I don't know, actually would be old business. So we'll move on to old business.
Actually, point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry, substitute pay, I missed that one. Mrs., Dr. Hizanka?
You're muted, Jessica.
He knows.
I'm sorry. I was trying to get the presentation ready so that I can turn this over to Jane. My apologies. Let me share my screen. I just need the host to allow me to do so.
Jerry?
How busy? Should have that ability now.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
All right, so Jane is going to walk us through the substitute rate of pay.
Hold on.
I think we have to unmute Jane as well.
Can you guys?
Yep, we heard you.
Okay, perfect. I'm just going to start with a quick overview. So as we look at the teacher substitute pay review, this has actually been on our radar for quite a while. And COVID has just kind of brought it, you know, to the forefront a little bit sooner or, you know, in a more immediate nature than, than I had intended on this. So we have access to about 50-plus districts throughout the state that have a shared document that goes through our New Hampshire HR, Human Resource, listserv. And so they've input a lot of their data into it. And I have found even since that data, which is the most recent we have, there have been changes due to the COVID pandemic. So what I did is trying to narrow it down towards this part of the state. I narrowed it down to about 19 surrounding districts, which is still fairly a broad reach. And I utilized the data from those surrounding districts for which to make some recommendations. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to provide two rates, one for non-COVID period, which would be the rate that we would have moving forward on a permanent basis until we were to do another rate review. And on a COVID basis, many of our neighbors have increased their rates quite a bit during the COVID pandemic. And so I have presented the data for those rates, so we'll go over those. So moving to the next slide, recommendations for the school board for the subrates. I tried to do it with as much information as possible. So in looking, I, I broke them down by the nurse, teacher, certified teacher, para and long-term sub. So the nurse rates were arranged from 70 to 200. They had a mean or average of $139 non-COVID and $143 COVID rate. So many districts had raised the rate for the COVID pandemic. The mode for the nurses was 125, mode being the number most often that, most often used or most common rate that was used. And the median is if I were to line up my, my range from 70 to 200 for the 19 districts, you would see.
Jessica, you're calling us.
The, the middle number would be $130. So I'm, I'm putting forth a recommendation based on that information to have a permanent rate moving forward of $135 for a nurse sub per day and during the COVID pandemic, $145 a day. So as we move to the teacher rate, and the teacher was broken down in most districts as a teacher or a certified teacher. So the teacher rates range from 65 to 150, as did the certified teacher rates. As we went down and we looked at the average or the mean, we came with a number for teachers of $89 non-COVID and $93 with the COVID pandemic rate. The certified teacher average was 9250 for non-COVID and $96 for COVID time period. The mode or the, the most common rate for teachers and certified teachers was $75. The median, again, lining up your rates from 65 to 150 and going with the middle number. The median for both those was $75. And Milford fell within the $75 rate. I'm proposing moving forward, a rate of $90 for a teacher and $100 for a certified teacher as the normal rate going forward. And for COVID pandemic rate for a teacher of $100 or a certified teacher of $110. As we move to the paraprofessionals, the range in the para rates was 50 to $100. And the average rate was $75 for a non-COVID rate and 7850 for the COVID rates. The most common number or the mode was $75 and the median also $75. So I have a recommendation of $85 for a non-COVID rate and $100 for a COVID rate, a daily rate. And then we have long-term subs. Long-term subs take on very, various forms in most of the districts as in our own. And so your long-term sub is typically a sub that's going to be in place more than 20 days. And more typically, if it is someone who's in place over half a year, they become a replacement sub. So what we've typically done with those and what I'm proposing going forward with those is to put them on a BA zero rate so that as they are in that position from days 21 on, they would be at a BA zero rate. If they are going to be a replacement sub, who's going to be there half a year or more, they would have the BA zero and they would also be provided with benefits. So that's what I have for a recommendation. More than willing to take questions as best I can.
To Martin?
Jane, two questions. First of all, for each of those, would you tell us what our current rate is?
Yes.
And then the second question is because you've got a COVID rate, would you be able to submit that for reimbursement by using federal funds?
In our budget, one of the things that I, I did do was kind of a financial, where are we now as far as being able to absorb these costs at this point moving forward? At least through the end of this year for the pandemic. For nurses, our current rate for a full-day nurse is $100. And I'm proposing to go to 135, which is more in line with the average, as you can see, throughout the region. And 145 for the pandemic rate on that. Our teacher rate is $75 and then I believe after 50 days, it goes to $85. So, and that is for a teacher or a certified teacher. So I have the proposal to do $90 and $100 based on teacher versus certified teacher. And then in the COVID time period, have it 100 and 110. For the paraprofessional rates, we have a $75 rate, which actually is, is, as I, as you'll see in the mean there, is, is basically right around your average. And so I'm recommending an $85 rate moving forward and $100 COVID rate until the end of the year.
Thank you. And, and would you be able to use anything that you had to do because of COVID to offset it with federal funds?
Yes, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, yeah, I was, but.
You're waving.
Sorry. Earlier, one of the public comments was, I mean, this idea that people are getting paid $150 or, you know, $125 in districts that we border.
Yes.
So I, I'm wondering what, because it seems to me, when. when we talk about 19 towns, someone wouldn't be substituting necessarily in that larger geographic area. So I'm curious if, like, keeping in, like, if we just talked about the bordering towns.
Yeah.
Are these going to keep us in the right ballpark? I mean, that's.
Yes and no, Judy. Some of the the larger, the area that I'm looking at is, you know, I looked at Pelham, Litchfield, Nashua. I mean, so many of our staff even even come from from those regions, which is why I did use that. But as we look at the Hollis Brookline, the Wilton and the Amherst. Now, Amherst has extremely high rates. Right now, for a full-day teacher sub and certified sub, they are $150 a day. So they are the only ones way in above anywhere near that that range. And for a para sub, they're at 100, and for a nurse, they're 200. If we look at Hollis Brookline, Hollis Brookline has a normal nurse rate of $100 a day. Teacher rate of $75 a day.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. It's 125 for non-certified and 150 for certified. That's a fact. I worked it.
I just got these from the HR person at Hollis Brookline.
That's not correct. I know that for a fact.
Well, what I have from the HR person is the 85 a day for certified and 85 for para.
That's the regular rate prior to COVID.
That's probably the cooperative rate. Maybe Brookline School District is different.
Well, their COVID rates are 150 for the nurse, 85 for a teacher, 100 for a certified teacher, and 85 for a para. If we go down to Wilton, Wilton was a little harder. I actually had to go through board minutes to get their rates. Their rates had changed as of, I believe, early to mid-November. So Wilton's regular nurse rate was 130, and I did not know to change to that, so it was still at 130. The teacher rate, the regular rate is $65 for a COVID rate. They have raised that to $120. A certified teacher rate has also been raised to $120. And their regular para rate is $65. And I didn't see an actual motion to raise it. There was discussion, but no motion. So I assumed it to be $120 equivalent to the teacher rate. What they had also done is they had hired or put openings in for four long-term teacher subs, which would be $212 a day. And those would be four positions that would be for 28 days. I know at the time in mid-November, when they had raised their rates to the COVID rates, they had not filled any of those positions according to their board notes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jerry. Those would be your neighboring districts.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
To Martin.
So Jane?
Yes.
Well, I happen to know you're having difficulty finding subs.
Yes.
All the way from paras up to nurses and teachers. Clearly, any increase will help.
Yes.
Are you comfortable and is Laura comfortable, HR comfortable, that you'll be able to draw substitutes with these new rates?
I don't know about Laura. I had sent this out Friday. I hadn't gotten a response to it. But the, I think our recommended rates, just the normal rate going forward, I think puts us right in line, if not slightly above the the region. The COVID rates, I have some concern. It's very hard to compete with $150 a day. I mean, if if I were, you know, an unbenefited person, I would say, heck, you know what? I'm going to quit the regular job and go for a sub job because it'll pay more. But I'm presenting these as a recommendation, and I I tried to bring, you know, as much of the the information as I could that I thought would would at least give you an idea of what what the area has.
One last question. When was the last time the district adjusted all of these rates?
It was before me. I think the teacher rate that went from 75 and then the 85, I want to say was done, and don't quote me, but I'm thinking around 2014?
It was about five years ago.
Was it?
Yeah, right before we came, they had raised the rate to about $75, I believe, for the teachers.
Yeah.
But it was in the range of about five years ago.
So are you looking for us to make a motion to utilize your recommended, your recommended new substitute rates?
Um, I here would be my thinking. I am fairly comfortable with my non-COVID rates. But I'm going to leave it to the board, you know, whether they feel, as you can see the range up top, the 150 that you're seeing and the 100 for the para, the 200 for the nurse on that first line of the range, that's Amherst all the way across.
So I'm just curious, why did you not recommend higher rates than for the COVID?
Just looking at the the ranges with the the local area, I mean, I would hope it wouldn't just come down to rate. But the other thing is, like I said, if I were a part-time employee that had no benefits and I were at my starting rate, I would say, you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to quit and I'm going to be hired in as a sub because I'll make more money.
Mrs. Aino, did you have your hand up?
I did. Um, yeah, I guess. I have to be honest with you. I, I think the COVID rates might be a little low. I'm, I'm thinking, I, I think you're right with 150. You can't possibly compete. I mean, I just don't think we can compete at that level. But I really do feel like 120 could probably put us in a much better position. That's, that is my personal opinion. I just feel like, right now, we really just need to get to the end of this year.
Yes.
I do think it's tough enough to be a sub, and I think it's even more difficult right now.
Yes, it is.
But I just, I'm fearful, particularly those two teacher rates. And I'm looking at a teacher and I'm looking at a para at the same, and they're not this, I mean, they're two, two very different jobs. Don't misunderstand. But I feel like, you know, I don't know, I just feel like the, I would rather see 120 for the COVID rates.
For teacher and certified or certified 130?
I don't know if I, I really felt like 120 for each for COVID rates. And I don't know, maybe para 110. That seems in keeping with, I mean, I was jotting down as you were talking, and I don't think we can do 150.
On average, what do our paras make per day?
Um, for a program associate, Joe, would be 1450 a day. A one-to-one starts at $15 a day. And a regular ed para, which would be like an instructional assistant, health associate.
Oh, they'd be better off. Every one of them would be better off being a sub.
Well, not if you have benefits.
Right.
Yeah, if they're part.
And I wasn't suggesting they do that. I'm just, you know, in my mind.
Do we, I got a question. What's the policy if we do? Does this district ever pull the paras to sub?
Repeat that again, Joe.
In this district, do we ever pull the paras to be the substitute teacher?
Yes, we do. Per their contract. Yep, they get an extra $5, I believe, an hour.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave?
The number I'm concerned about is the COVID rate for nurses. We we know that's very difficult to get nurses in.
Yep.
And when we're looking at a pandemic, that is, as Kevin, as Mr. St. Ange has made clear many, many times, we can't afford not to have a nurse in the building. So I personally would like to see, and again, assuming that these rates are only through the end of this school year, we can re, relook at them if if we're still needing COVID next September. I would like to see the nurses rate a little bit more competitive. You don't have to get up there with Amherst, but I'd almost like to see you above most of the others, or at least equal with all the others.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So we need a motion.
Can I get a word in for first, please? With all due respect, I've had my hand up for 10 minutes.
Oh, Kevin, you weren't there.
I, I'm right here.
Yeah. You're, you're there now, but we didn't see you before. So sorry about that.
But going back to one of the questions that Mr. Martin asked of Jane, I think the superintendent should be given an opportunity to answer the same question. Will these recommended new rates, you know, make a difference in your ability to staff our district with substitutes when and as needed? And then I have a second question, but why don't, you know, that that was one of the questions that Steve asked of of Jane, and I think the superintendent should be able, should speak to that as well, or be given that opportunity to address it. What's your position on the recommend, recommended?
So I, I think these, I think these recommendations, you know, were thoughtfully put together by the, by the business administrator. You know, Jane worked very hard and looked at comparables. But I also hear the board members, and I agree that, you know, these, at least the COVID rates, I'm very comfortable and pleased with the regular rates as recommended. I do think based on the increase in funding that we will be receiving, we have the leeway to be able to increase the current rates under COVID, and the board should do so.
So going back to COVID then, and Jane, I'm curious, you you've referred to the COVID rate and the non-COVID rate. And if you said this earlier, I apologize if I missed it, but what defines when we're going to utilize the COVID rate and when we stop utilizing the COVID rate? Because if Mr. Martin has his way, we've got a full return to school in April. Does that mean the COVID rate no longer applies in April?
I would say it would apply till the end of the year, and that that, at least in reading Wilton's board minutes, theirs was going to go till the end of the year, and I believe that's also what the Hollis Brookline, what I had been told, would be till the end of the year. And then revisit it if need be. So full return or not, to me, these would still be the rates.
Why no linkage?
And I have no problem, you know, if the board wishes to raise those at all, I'm presenting them as a recommendation based on the research I did.
But why no linkage between the COVID rate and the, and the, and the full return?
Um, I believe we're still going to have a hard time getting people in. I think if, even if your students come back full in, you're still going to have a remote contingent, just as you'll have a remote contingent of staff. And I still think there'll be a fear out there because I'm not sure where we're going to be as far as the vaccination goes.
Um, I I can also, just one consideration, Mr. St. Ange. Just because we go into a full return doesn't mean that by some happenstance, we may have a spike again, and then we would have to go to remote. So COVID's not over, and vaccinations are going to continue through the end of the year. And I do think through the end of the year makes perfect sense. I also think that there's no silver bullet. Substitutes are scarce right now. And raising the amounts, you know, whether we land between Hollis, Brookline, and Amherst, that definitely may draw substitutes, but there's no guarantee. Substitutes are scarce all over the state, all over the country. So I don't think that there's a silver bullet here, but it is going to help tremendously if we increase these rates tonight.
Understand. Thank you.
So based on the feedback, it sounds like you guys would want to raise the nurse. Do you think if we did $20 on the COVID nurse, $20 on the teacher, and $20 on the certified teacher? So 165, 120, 130, or 125 for certified teacher would be sufficient?
I think I'd like to see the para rate go up as well to 110.
So what would you like? Where do you think that one needs to go up to?
110? Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, after we lost Kevin for a while.
I know. You just weren't on the screen. All right, so, so we're saying 160. So are you comfortable with 165? And Jane, if you want to jot these down, and then we can discuss them. On the COVID side for nursing, 165, the COVID side for teacher, 120. The COVID side for certified teacher, I think it needs to be a little more than non-certified, 125 or 130?
Either one.
I would recommend 30.
130, okay. Certified teacher, 130, and then para 110?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept Jane's proposed new rates for substitute pay with the modification on the nurse COVID to 165, teacher COVID to 120, certified teacher COVID to 130, and para COVID to 110.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kevin?
I would just like to amend the motion if you'd be willing to do so to to limit this, the COVID period to be defined by the end of this school year.
Oh, yeah.
And we revisit, and we, and we'll revisit the rates as may be necessary over the summer, depending on what the circumstances are on the ground when school reopens fully in-person in September.
Amended as noted, I think that that's smart.
Why don't we get a second to the amendment?
I second it.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor. Steve, I'm going to call you first because I don't see you. Are you?
Uh huh. Kevin knocked me out. I.
I'm Joe.
Hi.
Judy.
Hi.
Kevin?
Are we voting on the amendment or the motion or both?
The amended motion.
The, if we're, I think we should need to vote on the amendment first, then on the main motion. So my recommendation is you go back to Mr. Martin with that clarification and ask him to his, his vote on the amendment. It's two steps.
I thought it was a friendly amendment. I thought it was a friendly change.
Yeah.
Okay, if you want it, that's fine. If you want to go that way, that's fine. I.
And Holly Topaz, I as well. The motion passes, just to clarify, nursing will go to 165. COVID through the end of the 2021 academic year. Teacher COVID will go to 120 through the end of this academic year. COVID, COVID certified teacher will go to 130 through the end of this academic year. And COVID para will go to 110 through the end of this academic year.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for bringing us all of this information and to help make this happen. I think that it was really important to move in the right direction.
Thank you, Jane. Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Mrs. Aino?
Um, I think before we go into old business mental health response update, I'm, I'm thinking back to what Ms. Seigrist said during public comments. And I, I had sort of the same reaction and wondered if we had sort of lumped the mental health issue in when we were doing the beginning of school, the opening schools back in August. And that's why we're doing an update, because I don't think it was ever a standalone, a standalone agenda item.
I think that, yes, I agree. I think I had reached out to the superintendent and simply asked her to put it on the agenda because somebody brought it up at the last meeting during the second period of public comment. Somebody brought up the mental health of the students. So because it had been brought up, and and I think it's just, you know, that's a just a misplacement mistake. The the good news is that we're discussing it and we're going to talk about it, and we're going to get an update from Santina.
Can I make a motion to move it to new business?
You certainly may. I will second that motion. Kevin?
I just have some new business I'd like to add before we move on to old business, that's all. So I don't care when we do. So I don't care when we do it, but that's.
Well, let's finish this motion, so all those in favor by roll call, Joe?
Hi.
Judy?
Hi.
Steve? You said I, but you're muted. Kevin?
Hi.
And Holly is I as well, motion passes 5-0. So we'll get back to your other item that you want to add, Kevin. For now, let's address the mental, you're welcome, let's address the mental health response update. And again, I just want to point out that at the end of our last public meeting during public comment, this topic was brought up, and I I just felt that it was important to address, and we look forward to hearing an update on how our district is really, you know, addressing these needs within the community.
Great, so I'm going to turn it over to Santina Thibodeau, our Executive Director of Student Services, and she's going to walk us through some of the work that's being done around the district regarding mental health.
Thank you. Santina, you might be muted.
Yes, he he just provided me to unmute. So thank you very much for for letting me update you on what we're doing with our mental health services for our students, family, and staff. As you know, all of our schools have, the school counselors and the social workers are relatively new within our district. We also have a mental health worker for Project Drive, and then the Jax School and Heron Pond, they share a mental health worker. So if we think about this group of individuals, they do a variety of services for not only students and our families. So a life in their day, they may be working with students that they've scheduled. It could be maybe a teacher reaches out to a social worker and says, I'm noticing the students having a hard time, maybe it's more of a situational intervention, or it could be a crisis, that the teachers rally with our school administrators, and they intervene to support a student. Some of the issues could be from attendance. Again, what's on their radar right now is the remote learning for students who have remote learning, they also can receive support from our social workers, counselors, and mental health. But it's also for kids who are transitioning back and ensuring that they have a smooth transition. And again, they do that individual, or they might do some small groups. They may do a lunch buddy, which could be a social group that they're doing, which is in a very kind of relaxed friendship building situation. The piece I don't want to forget is that these individuals provide a tremendous amount of support to our school administrators, as our students may be having some difficulties where 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 we are in remote learning. And speaking with our our social workers and school counselors, when students are struggling, they're often reaching out to these individuals as that first line of defense of that their child is is struggling, how can, what can we do, what kind of services might they need? They also work with the outside agencies, which in no for many of you are familiar with, Share, they've done some work with United Way of Greater Nashua, who had some resources while we were in remote to support families who may need some equipment for remote learning. We have our mental health centers, NAMI, which is a national organization to support mental health, and then, of course, Bridges. When we think about our wraparound services, these may be students who and families who are involved in a variety of services, and it's our school counselors and social workers in the mental health, they become that point of contact to help families maneuver through these various entities. They may also even help with housing. If we think about, as I think we mentioned earlier, that because of the pandemic, we do have some families who have either lost their jobs or their hours were reduced, so they may be working with families to help with some financial resources. Jax is implementing their calming and planning and safety. This is a trauma-informed approach that they're using with their students. They're they're using a service team model, which is very similar to that wraparound model, and they're using the services within the school to support a student, and then reaching out to those outside resources when needed. We're also engaging our students and staff in Choose Love. Choose Love is a social emotional program that the Department of Education is offering. The wonderful thing about Choose Love is, as Choose Love was developing and growing, they now are being recognized with some of the national standards when we think about social emotional learning. They have met the Castle standards, and they've also been recognized to meet the standards within the character, social, emotional development. And within our Choose Love, you're going to notice that there are classroom lessons, so we have our teachers working through some of this. We have our social workers, there's the school counselors, and the mental health, they may be doing some individual lessons on this. And then for our staff, we have our our school health benefits. This is an EAP. Many of our staff will receive emails, and again, they're very short. You can participate in a video, and then they have some incentives that you might be able to learn. And then through one of our grants that you may have, I think we spoke about at our last meeting, our Promising Futures Grant, we're going to bring Lynn Lyons in to talk about some education educator self-care. That will be our next month. Lynn Lyons was presented to our staff at the beginning of the last school year, understanding anxiety within students and working with families. So this will be the second time that Lynn is in our district. And if there are any questions, I'll just, Holly, I'll just wait to have you pass them on to myself.
So if there's anyone that wants to ask a question at this point about specifically Santina's mental health presentation, Ms. Mrs. Zano?
Ms. Thibodeau, yesterday, oh, actually, the day before yesterday, I got a an email from a parent, and they had a copy, a PDF of this agenda with the mental health response update circled in red. And the parent went on to explain that that they had a student who had threatened self-harm, and that it had been very difficult for the family to to receive support in the school district. And I found that deeply troubling. I reached out and asked if they would not mind speaking of making a public comment, but they felt that it was so personal, and the only way you can make a public comment is to give your name and address, and that this would be just too uncomfortable for for their child. And it was heartbreaking. And I I said, I hope we're going to do better. And I'm not quite sure how we can do better. I mean, if it on the on the surface, it looks like we've got it covered, but I'm worried when someone tells me a personal story like that. And I know folks fall through the cracks, we talk about that in all kinds of different, I mean, different organizations. This right now, I'm, yeah, so I really would like to follow up with with you, but I also want to make sure that that we do better. I and I'm, that's not a condemnation, these have been really difficult times. But with everything that we've experienced with our young people, and I know Mr. Martin made a comment earlier, we've heard about, you know, so many young people, both threatening and following through with self-harm, that I just found that really disconcerting.
I also find it unsettling. So if you could work with that parent, or if maybe that parent wants to reach out to me, one of the areas that our our staff do work with is the self-harm and finding the appropriate resources.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just concerning because they felt abandoned. And I I wanted to share that. I I'm fearful that there may be other people out there who chose not to contact any of us, and that bothers me more, you know, I'm I'm not quite sure how we can ferret that out, which is the only reason I'm bringing this up, because I sort of toyed with the idea of not mentioning it and just talking to you personally about it. But then I got to this place where I said, if I say it out loud, and there are other people who feel like they fell through cracks, that we can still reach out to, that I wanted to make sure it not to be public, we don't have to share information in public, everything is confidential, so please reach out and let us know what's happening, so that we can provide services, that we can provide support. So thank you, Ms. Thibodeau, I did not mean to unseat your message or or take it off track, I just really wanted to share that in a public forum, thank you.
So we'll connect offline then.
Yes, certainly, absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a comment and a and a question for Ms. Thibodeau. I guess the comment is, I'm just, I'm discouraged to hear Mrs. Zano that about that experience, because I have to tell you, that was not my experience personally, and I can share personally because it's my confidentiality, right? But I moved here two years ago, two and a half years ago, with three daughters, two of them were teenagers, and I moved here six months after their mother passed away. And I was able to avail myself of school counselors and social workers in our district, and they did a wonderful job, both as a resource for my two older daughters, and as a resource for me to find appropriate assistance for my entire family. And that was pre-pandemic, I grant you that. But I I find that the staff that we have in that area that I've worked with, and Heather Forten in particular, just a wonderful, wonderful person to work with, and I would encourage, and I'm using this as a platform, Judy, frankly, to encourage people not to be discouraged by any negative stories that they may have heard, but to but to trust that there there's some really good people in that department in our district, and and reach out for that help and so forth. And I won't get into specific details beyond that, except to say my hats off to that department, there are some really good people there. The specific question I have for you, Ms. Santina, though, is unless I missed it in the presentation, it's a great PowerPoint, and it seems to be about information, you know, mental health services for children and our students and so forth. I'm just wondering what, if anything, we're doing for our staff, because pandemic time period here is affecting not just our students but our staff, and we can't fully return to school unless and until we have a staff that's here to handle that. And there are significant mental health issues for the for the adults that are responsible for our children, and I'm wondering what, if anything, your department has been doing with with staff or making resources available to them?
So I did mention the school care health benefits, and that's something that staff can access on, really, we we get emails out as as a staff member in the school district. I do know that some of the staff have gone to the social workers and mental health workers. Again, I think that some feel very comfortable asking for resources through them, for the staff who may not feel so comfortable going to a colleague. There's also our HR department, who I know people have gone directly to HR asking for resources, and if Laura's on the call, I'm going to ask if she couldn't speak a little bit more about that.
Hi there, everybody, it's Laura Seibert, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. So I was glad to see that Santina included the EAP program, the Employee Assistance Program, which is open to all of our staff, not just those that are a part of our insurance company or on our coverage. And what the EAP does is it connects people with varying all forms of support, whether it be counseling for themselves or childcare resources, any manner of need, they're really the concierge. Our school care has done a pretty good job, I I hope people are seeing this in their inboxes, both in their personal emails and their work emails, of reaching out and also extending other options. Cigna sends out information to folks that are on our health insurance plan. But as far as the our the district doing outside of those doing like specific things for our staff beyond perhaps professional development opportunities, if if they're like focused on what the each individual person is doing, we haven't done anything, and I'd be happy to explore that with people if if there's some ideas that might be helpful, like perhaps, for instance, coordinating some yoga sessions or some meditation sessions. Those are just examples, but I would be happy to work with our staff and coordinate something like that, use maybe partnering with a YMCA locally, because this is a long sustained period of time for all of us. So like I said, I'm open to suggestions.
Kevin, are you all done? Your hand's still up.
Yeah, I was I was concerned until Laura just spoke and expressed that, you know, other than what's provided through the insurance companies and outside sources, we weren't, we didn't really have an acknowledgement that we're not, as a district, we don't have resources or providing programs for our staff. And I think I thought that was an important distinction and element to make, a point to make, and I appreciate Laura Seibert doing that. So my question, I guess, would be for Dr. Hizenga, and it's not for this evening, but for as you continue your, you know, full return to school planning, I'm I'm wondering if you could incorporate as an element of that return to school plan, some programming for our staff as we go from and migrate from this remote, hybrid remote to full return, something for the mental health of our staff. These are extraordinary times, and they they call for extraordinary measures.
Yes, we can certainly explore some new programs for staff as we plan for reopening, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hizenga. I'm just going to break protocol because I think this is a really important topic, and there are three hands raised. If you have a question specific to addressing mental health for students, families, and staff, I'd like to give you the opportunity to ask your question of Ms. Thibodeau while she is still here with us. So Susan Smith, if you're, if that's what your question is, if it's something else, please wait till the end. So put your hands down if it's not for this, all right? Susan Smith?
Sorry, I tried to put my hand down, it's not.
Okay, I'll mute you and come back to you at the end. All right, Dawn Rojo. Dawn Rojo, did you have a question for Mrs. Thibodeau? Or Natalie Rottandee?
Hi, thank you, Natalie Rottandee, Chris Wood Lane, Milford. I I guess I I really appreciate all the different resources that are available. I was hoping that I could. I was hoping that, um, I could hear some kind of a comparison to baseline versus pandemic. Do we not know what we don't know? Has there been an increase in students and families reaching out, asking for resources? I'm, I'm concerned that there are children that we're not reaching because they're not raising their hand and maybe their parents don't know how to raise their hands for them. So I guess if you could speak to what a normal or typical year would have looked like in terms of, um, demand and how that has changed with the pandemic and specifically maybe by age group, that would be really helpful.
Um, thank you, Natalie. Um, I think we're, uh, it's hard to get that longitudinal piece because our social workers are relatively new. Um, I, I think that you've heard, uh, Dr. Hezanga talk about, I think they're here, they've been here two or three years. One of our social workers has only been here for, um, a, a year. So what, what I'm telling you is really just what, what I'm hearing. And, uh, parents are reaching out to, to these, uh, these staff with their concerns. Um, I, I also that they're reaching out to the building principals or, or the assistant principals. And it's through that avenue that they're getting into this behavioral health piece. I do think as kids return, some are very, very happy. There is some anxiety and again, the anxieties, the, the, that fear of the unknown. I think some kids are very happy. Some kids are also worried that, um, will they have to go back to remote? I think that they are doing, um, a lot of talking about COVID and that schools are safe. And then just, just maneuvering through, uh, this different way of school, of what school will look like, where the, the classes are smaller and they may not see their friends, except when they're doing the, um, remote learning.
So it sounds like we, we don't really have a good feel for how different it, it may have been from, from last year to this year.
Uh, not in the level of statistics, um, where you're asking, are we having an increase of referrals?
Even anecdotally though, it, it, it sounds like maybe you're having more families reach out. I mean, I know it's happening. If, if you can't speak to it, then fine.
Yes, yes. I, I do know that more families are reaching out. But I don't have a comparison to how many reached out last year and how many are reaching out this year.
And are there any outreach efforts from your department? Um, I'm thinking teenagers, um, in particular, are, are you offering or, or addressing specific issues rather than, and this is going to come out wrong, so please grant me some grace. But rather than saying, hey, we're here for support, maybe kind of talking about some of these things that were mentioned like self harm, you know, and, and normalizing asking for help in that way. You know, what, what proactive is being done for each, um, population in terms of reaching out and kind of checking in and inviting people to let, let you know if they're not okay?
Yep. I can speak to that just a little bit and then Santina by all means jump in.
Sure.
In this year, when we engaged in the Choose Love program, those lessons and strategies have been going on across the district, uh, K through 12. And one of the reasons that we have heard, and I've heard this from the Milford Police Department, um, I've heard this from, uh, you know, anecdotally, from, you know, families, school counselors. There has been more of a engagement from students, uh, to our school resource officer, to, um, you know, the officers that are in our schools, to our teachers. Because of many of the lessons, um, in that program, it's made them much more self-aware of, uh, various different topics that have been covered. So we've actually seen a great response from our kids. And, um, you know, I, I think if the social workers, you know, were to, you know, talk, they would say that, you know, they've been working very, very closely with a variety of families. We have additional mental health workers this year. Our school social workers are actually only a year and a half in and we entered the pandemic in March. So they have not been here very long. We added them in every building and an additional mental health counselor. So, um, this has definitely been something that we have advocated for and seen a great need for. And in combination with our new SEL program, um, we're seeing people, our, our kids and our families take, um, real advantage of it.
I, thank you. I'm so glad to hear that. I, I think it's reassuring, um, that it's not, uh, crickets out there and that people are utilizing these resources. So thank you. I really do appreciate that. And then just, I guess, one suggestion would be, um, when you talk about, um, the element, as Mr. St. Ange had suggested for staff and mental health for staff regarding the full return plan, it, it would, could you consider incorporating some element of asking for open-ended or more open-ended feedback from your staff in terms of what their concerns are, rather than making educated guesses as to what they're struggling with? And you probably would have thought of that anyway, but just in case, I think it would be great to give staff that opportunity to tell you what their concerns are and what they're struggling with.
No, I definitely appreciate that. Um, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, the, we have an upcoming Lynn Lyons presentation on educator self-care. Um, this is actually, uh, I think Santina just mentioned it a little while ago, um, as part of the Promises Grant that we were awarded. I also just want to point out, I think a really neat thing, um, at the high school, they created a social and emotional learning, they, they created various committees last year. Um, and I know that they have done some internal work with mindfulness, um, that has been led by staff. And I know that our, um, so school, high school social worker has worked with staff. So I know individually at each of the buildings, um, they have done various things. But, um, we definitely want to continue to build on that and improve those services. And I think reaching out to staff and asking them, um, specifically what their needs are and reminding them of the benefits that are available to them, um, are all things that, that we can do better with.
Thank you. That, I really appreciate all of this. And I think I said it last time, but, uh, I'm very, very excited that Lynn Lyons is going to be available for, um, staff and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. So I believe Stacy Cusack may have a question pertaining to this topic. Stacy?
Nope, sorry, I put it up.
No worries, no worries. Okay. So I don't see any other hands up. Do we, do we have any board member comments still pertaining to this topic? So thank you for the updates. I, I think it's really important. And I think as we get back to more of a possibility of full onsite education as well, that we may see an increase in the need for crisis intervention. So, um, and I also want to compliment, um, the mental health workers and the school counselors and the social workers. I've had personal experience with them as well. And they really go above and beyond to ensure that every child gets exactly what they need. As do the teachers, um, who have, who will also reach out. And I would encourage any, any person that's, that sees any student, um, if you see something, bring it to the attention of, of Santina and she'll get them connected to the right resources. Sometimes outsiders have a different vision. All right. So the next item on the agenda is, on the agenda again. Um, I, I believe Mr. St. Ange wanted to add something to.
Two motions I'd like to make, uh, in new business. The first one is pursuant to Board Policy 2135, which sets up our Standing Policy Review Subcommittee, which is intended to ensure the relevance and currency of our policies. I move that the following policies be referred to the Standing Policy Review Subcommittee for review, repeal and replacement. Board Policy 2151, Board Policy 2152, and Board Policy 2402, Section CDNA. If the, if my colleagues on the board would like me to enumerate, um, what those are, I'd be happy to if you are, um, willing to at least consider moving these matters to this policy subcommittee. They can be discussed more fully in the subcommittee at that time. That's motion number one.
Uh, Kevin, are those the same motion? Those are the same policies you mentioned earlier in the meeting?
Yes, yes ma'am. So I, I might as well just give you the headings for them. 2151 is board member use of electronic communication devices during school board meetings. 2152 is the public comment process during school board meetings. Uh, that, that, that particular discussion has come up several times over the last several years and, and several times in the last couple of weeks. And it, I think it bears, um, our attention at the policy, uh, committee level to discuss what, what can, what we can and can't do about making changes to that policy. This board, this chairperson has inherited the rules that were modified by two, you know, two school boards ago. Um, I think it, it bears review. Um, and I'm open to a lot of different discussions on that, but I'm particularly concerned with the time limits. We need to have some, but I think we need to have some discretion, um, in, in terms of being able to go over those time limits. I also believe, as Mr. Martin has, has expressed a few times, and I agree with him, that we should not be slavishly adhering to this, you know, rule that limits public comment to only those items that are on the agenda. There are other good rules in our policy that limit what people can discuss, appropriately so. We're not going to open public comment to personnel matters and so forth. And those rules should, should remain in place. But I, I do think there are some procedural elements to 2152 that need to be reviewed. 2402 is the Staff Conduct and Ethics, Additional Standards of Conduct and Ethics. Sections A and B incorporate by reference what is already required by law via the New Hampshire Code of Ethics for New Hampshire educators. Um, as that's, as that statute may be amended, you know, from time to time by the state. Section C and CDNA, however, I think bear review. They're vague, in my opinion, overly broad, although aspirational, probably unenforceable in many ways. And I think for that reason alone, we need to, as a, um, as a board, consider repealing, revising and replacing, uh, that section. I'll make my sec- I have a second motion, but it's unrelated to this.
A second?
So open for discussion and this is a great time to bring up the fact that, um, the policy committee hasn't met much of late due to, you know, COVID. And also, one of the members on the policy committee resigned. So there is an open position. How it has worked in the past is somebody that has an idea to change a policy, writes up what they want to change, presents it to the committee. The committee reviews, makes any changes, then they bring it back to the board for a vote. So I would encourage you, if you have specific verbiage, um, that you want addressed, to, um, write it up. Um, and that brings up the next topic of, there's an opening on the policy committee. Is anyone interested in stepping up? Mr. St. Ange, you might be a good person to do that since that would give you insight directly to the process.
As an interim board member, I'm not sure if that's, if that would be, uh, to borrow your word prudent, uh, as I will, you know, may not be serving on the board beyond the middle of March. I will be happy to write up, you know, excuse me, my recommendations. But my recommendations might be more than just language changes. And it, I think I might want to solicit input, particularly as to 2402 and its changes, input from a variety of different sources that might want to come and speak to that policy committee.
So I believe, I know many of the policies that were changed last year were done so at the recommendation of the School Board Association and with input. I, I don't believe 2402 was one. Jessica, do you happen to know 2402? I think that, that was not one that we took verbiage that was given to us, correct?
Not specifically taken from the School Board Association.
That one was?
It was not.
Was not? Okay. So, and I know the other two weren't either. Um, so yeah, if you want to, uh, it's, so the reason I suggest, even though you're interim, that you potentially, um, the, the spot needs to be filled until a new school board member is elected anyways. And it would give you the ability to meet with the policy committee.
Sure, not a problem. Be happy to do that.
So I'll reach out to, um, Jessica to try to schedule, uh, policy review meeting at some point in the next, you know, couple of weeks.
Oh, and I, in exchange, of course, I'll, I'll put, now, now this isn't part of the motion. The motion is to have, is to submit these policies to the policy committee for review, repeal and replace. Uh, the specifics of my, and my language and recommendations, uh, to that will be made to the policy committee and will be dealt with there and come out of the committee to the full board at a later date.
So I don't think the policy committee has met with outside contributors previously. And I'm not sure what that protocol is.
We'll figure it out.
Jessica?
I've definitely not done that. Um, and this discussion was raised, uh, I think in our last session with, um, and it, it was deemed that, that, that wasn't, there wasn't a role for outside, um, individuals on the policy committee. And we opened it up to the public. We had those meetings in public. That was new. But we did have this discussion and it wasn't deemed appropriate to have outside people contributing to the policy development and being, you know, part of the policy committee meetings.
Was or was not? I'm sorry, Dr. Hezanga.
It's not.
Okay.
Steve?
I will tell you, um, the way it should work is superintendent is correct. I, I know of no school district that develops policies by committee. However, the whole purpose of having a first and second reading is to actually solicit input from the community and actually make changes, if it makes sense. Uh, I know, I know one policy, uh, our, our current chair tried to even make a comment on it and the prior board chair, not, not Mike Cannon, Mr. Carvell, wouldn't even listen to you. So I think, I think if, if the policy committee makes recommended changes and then we have a public first reading and a public second reading and actually listen to the public, I, I think that Kevin would probably suffice.
I agree.
The way it's supposed to be done. I, I will admit, Milford hasn't been doing that for a long time.
I, I'm looking at the, at 30, 2132 now, and it doesn't provide or prohibit, um, involving outside entities. But I agree with you, procedurally, getting input from the teachers' union leadership, uh, the public and so forth, absolutely can be accomplished, uh, as a result of a first and second reading once something comes out of the, uh, Policy Review Committee. So to the extent my motion, I don't think I intended to include that as a, as a part of the motion. My motion is simply to refer 2151, 2152 and 2402 to the Policy Subcommittee for review, repeal and replacement.
Any further discussion? All right, um, our roll call vote. Judy Zano?
Aye.
Jovetuli? You said aye? Yes. Steve Martin?
Aye.
Kevin St. Ange?
Aye.
Holly Tapa?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And I have a second motion, if I may. We've had several, uh, discussions in recently, both, um, by members of our community and, uh, by board members who have expressed that, man, it would really be nice if we could have a school board listening session or, or some kind of a meeting where with a public comment period would be extended and wouldn't be confined to, you know, really short time periods and late at night, especially the second comment period that we're about to get to at some point. So I'm going to, I'm, let's take action. Let's, I'm going to make a motion now that we, um, you know, schedule a school board public listening session that will be confined to, uh, public comment period. And it'll be run and conducted in the same manner that our current public comment period rules are set up so that we can give our staff, our, uh, our, um, and our families and the voters and so forth, our school community constituents, the opportunity to come and express themselves. However, it needs to be confined to the, you know, the appropriate rules and regulations that govern public comment now. It's just that we would broaden the scope and the time allotted to individual speakers, whether it goes from three minutes to five minutes or something of that nature. But rather than be constrained by so many other pieces of business that necessarily come before us and have to be acted upon, I, I'm recommending and I'm moving that we take an hour, schedule an hour or two weeks from now to allow the public to come and voice their concerns and express themselves on appropriate matters of business before the school board.
So who do you want to respond to this? Are you looking for board response or staff or SAE response?
It's a, it's a, it's a public listening session. It's public comment period as, in the same manner in which we conduct during our regular meetings. But we'll expand the, um, comment period from three to five minutes. All other rules apply. Uh, if speakers want to address the board a second time, they can do so after all other, um, members of the public have had an opportunity to speak.
That's a noble, that's a noble motion for someone who's not going to be, so you, you're asking to do this every two weeks? That's a noble, that's a noble motion for someone who's not gonna be, so you, you're asking to do this every two weeks henceforth or just once?
I didn't say that, with all due respect. He said, "One time." He said, "In two weeks, in two weeks, let's do it once." The community has expressed themselves and asked us for this. Before we go devising a new policy and creating a policy, why don't we try it on for size?
Judy?
Yeah, I'm, I think the intention is good, Mr. St. Ange. What concerns me is that people specifically wanted answers. And sort of you, I think about this idea that we're gonna sit in a forum and people are gonna ask questions. And sometimes there are answers, sometimes there aren't answers. How do we constrain this so that, I mean, we've run into this before where, I mean, I timed the comments, right? And then as soon as someone answers, how, where does the timing begin and end? And I, so I think this might be, we, we might need to figure out a structure, which was what I was alluding to earlier. I think it's a, a great idea. I just think that we might need to think about the structure before we jump in. And I don't want to, I'm not saying, put it, I'm not trying to say it's not a good idea. I'm just saying I'm concerned about the structure. And I think it's just really tough that there are, people could ask questions for which we could not possibly be prepared to answer. Information that we don't have or things that we simply can't say.
And that's the answer.
I, I, I just, I guess I'm just kind of looking for some kind of structure before I jump into a, yeah, let's sit for an hour. And I do, I like the idea of people having more time to give public comments. I like the idea of that kind of feedback. I'm just not sure how we would structure a Q and A that had even a time limit to it, that we didn't know what we were answering, that what we were supposed to bring to the table for answers. I, I guess that's, I just, I want some kind of structure.
I'll give you a structure if you like. I'd love to respond to that, if I may. I think those are legitimate questions and concerns. I'm not afraid of the public and neither should our board, neither should you be. I think we should embrace the public coming to us with their questions. We should be allowed the opportunity to try to answer them if we can. I agree with you a thousand percent. There are any number of questions that will be asked that we can't answer. And even if we can answer, we shouldn't answer. And that's, that's, that's understandable. That's how it works. I get that.
Right.
That doesn't mean we don't conduct the meeting. And it's, and, and since our community has expressed this multiple times to us, I, especially since we're talking about doing it as likely as if we're continuing our, our meetings in a Zoom session, I'm not sure what the downside is to doing what our community is asking of us in this, in this respect.
Right. And I don't disagree. I, I don't, I'm not afraid of talking to the public or answering questions.
No, you're not.
That's not the issue. What I'm saying is, okay, I come up and I have a question, right? In order to answer you my question, it's gonna take you 15 minutes. What happens to everybody else who's got a question? How long does, when, when does it stop being a comment and start being a question? So I take my five minutes and I tell you my comment and then at the end I have the question. And even if the question takes two minutes to answer, it, it, that's why I'm like, I really would like to know what the structure is before we jump in. How would we time this? How would we answer? Who would be best suitable for answering? There are times that the board members don't agree on things, so that means I answer and then you answer because we have two different positions, right? So that's why, that's what I, Kevin, that's what I'm looking for.
I understand.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Judy, but I think that we have to be adults here. And we, you know, you can read the room. The, the chair can read the room and understand when things have wandered off the path. And, you know, when it is that people have, have wandered off the topic. I don't think it's really that difficult to do that. And, and I think that even if it is a little difficult and maybe we run over at times, I mean, gosh knows, these meetings run late all of the, many, many times for that same reason. It's worth it. I think our people have, I think the people of Milford have asked for this. And I agree, it may not be perfect. It may be ugly. We may, people may, you know, may not be satisfied with the responses that we can or can't give. That's what they've asked for, and it's something we can do.
So are you asking for the administration to participate as well? Are you, are you perceiving this as simply a Q and A between the five board members and the public? Or the five board members, the staff, the SAU and the public?
It's, it's the school board and the, and the public. And if, if, you know, I mean, if, if, if you, my colleagues, if my colleagues want to do it differently, I'm open to sugge, I'm open to other suggestions. I'm just starting to, I'm just trying to start a conversation about this because I think we talk about things and don't actually take action. So I'm taking action tonight. I'm making a motion that we schedule a public listening session structured along the lines of our public comment period, expand the time that people have to address the board, however, confine it within a reason to what we typically do in our public comment periods. I think we can, I, you know, I think we can do that. I think we, I think our, I think our constituents want that.
Mr. Vitulie, you had your hand up before?
No. I already voiced my opinion that we need to have some type of Q and A, public Q and A, whether it's once a month, once a quarter, however you want to do it. That's where I'm standing with that. We need to have some type of forum to.
Okay, so in, in, for the sake of time, it's nine twenty. So did you get a second? Judy, did you second?
I did not.
Okay. Did, does anybody want to second the motion, Mr. Mr. Martin?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. Mr. St. Ange?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Miss, Mrs. Zaino?
Aye.
Mr. Vitulie?
Aye.
Well, the, the motion passes already, but I, I very hesitantly will say aye. So the motion passes five zero with the caveat that I believe having two periods of public comment has given us the ability to address many of our constituents. I personally try as the chair right now to respond to every email I receive. I try to filter it to the proper channels, et cetera. I would just caution, you talk a lot about precedent. I think a one-time situation to sort of feel it out, but again, where, as the board, the meeting of the board is to do board business. So listening to concerns is great, but the, the Q and A part, as Judy pointed out, may, you know, grow and grow and grow. So should we pick a date?
Separate meeting. Yes, that's what we talked, that's what.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Well, he's saying two weeks from tonight, which would be a regularly scheduled meeting, so.
Doesn't have to be. But no, that's not my intent. My intent is not to do this on a regularly scheduled meeting night at all. It's its own entity. And if nobody comes, we, we shut it down and we all go home. If, if people come and, and want to speak, we, we, we schedule it for an hour.
I have an idea. I think the board should be allowed to present their suggestions as well. Like, please be cautious when you file write-to-know requests on a consistent basis because it costs a lot of time and resources for the district. Would just be my. So I'm trying to look at, we should pick a date then. So we are, today is the fifteenth. We are scheduled to meet again on the first. So, March second. Earlier in the evening or at six o'clock? Does that work for everyone?
I think we can do the scheduling off record. I don't know that we have to do that here. And in fact, I'd prefer that we do it off for a variety of reasons.
I think it's important, if we're gonna do it, that we get a date though. So to the public listening, we'll get you a date by the next meeting, I guess. Okay, so that closes out new business and moving on to old business. And we only have one item on the agenda. Actually, I'm, yes, we only have one item on the agenda, which is a reopening update. Dr. Zander?
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, I'm gonna share my screen and I'm gonna try to be brief. So if you can have any questions that you might have about our reopening. Okay, so as you know, two weeks ago, the leadership team gave the board a pretty in-depth return to in-person learning presentation. And tonight, I'm just gonna be very brief in terms of just updating the board with any new information that we have. I know that there's been a lot of buzz and a lot of talk about the new CDC recommendations that came out this weekend, and I will speak to those. I'll also talk a little bit about where our numbers are looking in district. But as you can see from the numbers that I received just this afternoon from Chief Flaherty and Captain Smedic, we are still in the substantial range in Hillsborough County. At the state of New Hampshire level, as of today, we had 2,953 cases. And the last time we spoke on two one, we had 4,886 cases. So we've seen a significant decrease. And so we're really excited that the metrics are going in the right direction. At the county level this afternoon, we just got these numbers in a little while ago, 397. And on two one, it was 605. That decrease is, is not correct because the numbers just changed this afternoon compared to this morning. New cases, we're averaging about three per day. And the trend is definitely downward in Milford as of this afternoon. We have 19 active cases, five are gonna expire at midnight tonight, leaving 14 active cases tomorrow. So as you can see, even though we are in the substantial range still, we are definitely heading in the right direction, which is really encouraging and definitely exciting and moving us closer to where we want to be. In discussion with Chief Flaherty this afternoon and this morning, we definitely are still exactly where we should be. We are in that sort of low to medium level of school impact. And we definitely are in the right model, which is a hybrid and/or in-person. They concur that exactly where we are right now is where we should be considering the numbers, although we are heading in the right direction and closer to where we would like to be to fully consider a return in person. So just an update on the numbers. You can see here at Jox Memorial School, we did have a bit of a spike in January in terms of the number of positive staff cases at the building level. We did not have any in-school transmissions. We're about midway through February and we have not seen any positive staff cases this month or any in-school transmissions. And this was as of Friday. Quarantines in January, you can see we had a bit of a spike due to close contact in school exposure. We've not seen any in February. Number of quarantines due to close contact out of school. Again, that spike in January was wholly expected. And we have not seen any in February. And then quarantines unrelated to positive cases, general sickness, travel, other. Again, we saw our highest amount in January and we have not seen any in February. The staff, or sorry, student cases followed a, a similar trend with January kind of being our highest number of quarantines, our highest number of student cases, our highest number of, our, our, not, not highest number of quarantines due to close contact outside of school. We've seen one in February. And then the number of quarantines due to positive cases, we saw about six in January. We've seen two in February. So, you know, Jox is looking pretty good this month. For the fifteenth, our numbers are, are actually very good. Heron Pond, again, as of Friday, are looking really good in February. We had more of a spike earlier on at Heron Pond in terms of higher numbers. In January, we only saw four student cases comparatively to, you know, four in October, five in November, two in December, zero so far in February. In-school transmissions looking good, quarantines due to the close contact in school. All of these trending downward, which is excellent. We've seen a, a bit of a rise in January of quarantines due to close contact outside of school. And most of this was during remote time. And in February, we've seen seven so far. And then we've seen quite a few quarantines at Heron Pond. These are some of our highest numbers. January, we had about 60 unrelated to positive cases and we're up to 52 right now in February. Staff, we saw again our highest numbers of staff positive cases in January, none in February. We've seen no in-school transmission amongst staff, which is excellent. Quarantines due to close contact in school exposure, just one for January and one for February. We've seen some quarantines due to close contact outside of school. But midway through February, you know, we're down to two. And quarantines unrelated to positive cases among staff, general sickness, travel or other, four in January, three in February. And so we're, we're definitely right around the same range as we were. Milford Middle School, we've seen one positive case in February. No in-school transmissions, no quarantines due to close contact in school. Quarantines due to close contact outside of school, we've seen seven, but that's a drop from January. So we're moving in the right direction. And then quarantines unrelated to positive cases, we're at seven right now midway through February, up from two in January. And as you can see from earlier on in the year, we had quite a, quite a bit higher numbers than that. And then staff, we've seen no staff positive cases in February compared to just one in January and two in December. No in-school transmission this entire year, which is excellent. So quarantines due to close contact in school exposure, we've seen none since November. Quarantines due to close contact outside of school. We did see a spike in December and January, and we've seen those numbers go down so far in February. And then we've had no quarantines unrelated to positive cases in February. And we had, you know, between four and five since October. So those numbers are looking good as well. And then finally, Milford High School. We've seen, again, that same sort of spike in January, but we're down to two so far in February. No in-school transmissions. We're down in terms of quarantines due to close contact in school exposure from 16 to six. And as you can see, we had quite a few between October and January. Quarantines due to close contact outside of school exposure. So far in February, we have nine. January, we had 16 compared to similar numbers in November and December. And quarantines unrelated to positive cases among students. We're up to 11 right now midway through February. So we're gonna keep our eyes on that number. And amongst staff, we're at one right now of positive cases in February. In-school transmission is zero. Quarantines due to close contact in school exposure, we're at one right now for February. Quarantines due to close contact outside school exposure, we're at two. And quarantines unrelated to positive cases, we're at one. I just want to highlight in this data, and something that I think is really, really important. In-school transmission has been about zero. I don't, I don't think that I remember on any of these slides where we've seen any significant in-school transmission at all. And I think that's a tremendous testament to the mitigation strategies that we've put in place, to the reopening plan that has been administered by our, our principals and assistant principals and coordinators, and the tremendous job that our teaching staff, our support staff and our facilities and maintenance staff has done cleaning our buildings. So I just want to send a big shout out to everyone for the excellent job that they have done because our in-school transmission numbers are, are really low to nothing. And that's really a testament to the hard work of our staff and an excellent reopening plan that we put in place. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. As I said earlier, there's been a lot of talk about the updated CDC school guidelines. And because we are in substantial to high transmission still at this time, even though, I just want to reiterate again, our numbers are trending in the right direction. The CDC guidelines. The CDC guidelines are absolutely urging schools to reopen safely and as soon as possible. But it's not just a blanket reopen as soon as possible. They have, you know, put it in different categories, and they do recommend a hybrid learning model with strict mitigation strategies when schools are in a substantial to high transmission category. So we are in the right model right now in terms of where we are with our numbers, okay? So I just want to be clear about that. And, you know, in consultation with our local health officials, they agree. Number one, we all agree we want to get back to school in person, full days as soon as possible, but we also want to do it as safely as possible. And we are exactly where we need to be considering our transmission rates and our current numbers. Milford School District, our, we have, our strategies actually are excellent and right in line with the CDC updates. Physical distancing of at least six feet, which is a CDC priority strategy, particularly at the level of substantial to high transmission rates. The universal and correct use of masks is another CDC priority strategy, which we have been doing since the very beginning and is part of our reopening plan. Cleaning, hand washing, contract tracing, and these are all strategies that were recommended in the current guidelines released on February 12. Viral testing strategies. We have local healthcare facilities that prioritize Milford School District students and staff to get tested quickly and efficiently. And another guideline that the CDC is recommending is vaccinations. Additional mitigation strategy, as soon as, you know, clinics allow for our educators and students to get vaccinated, they recommend that we do so. So there's a couple of things that the board can consider this evening. You know, one motion would be to consider, to continue to explore a full return to school while consistently monitoring community transmission rates, which is exactly what the CDC recommendations this weekend state we should be doing. And, you know, once we move out of substantial, we can really start moving in that full return option, and the administration will continue to update the board in four weeks or before then, when community transmission, that category changes, whichever comes first. Another thing that the board can consider tonight is to stay the course with the current model for the remainder of this school year unless conditions force another transition to full remote. And another option for the board to consider is to continue with the hybrid model for the remainder of the year. However, increase to a four-day-a-week live full-day instructional model at the secondary level. Maintain the current model at the elementary. This would entail exploring a room-and-zoom delivery method by teachers at the secondary level for the A-B day model and for students in quarantine at the elementary level. And there may be other options or considerations that the board may want to discuss, but these are just three that we discussed as a leadership team. We feel that, you know, considering the new guidelines, again, we're exactly where we need to be right now as of today. That may change a week from now, it may change two weeks from now, it may change four weeks from now. So it's really up to the purview of the board to consider any one of these or none of these at all, or something, you know, totally different. We're definitely open to hearing your thoughts and suggestions.
But Jessica, of the three that you mentioned, which is the one that you recommend?
Well, you know, I think that we, as I said, we are exactly where we need to be right now. I am a huge proponent of pursuing, bringing back all children to school. I would love to see that before the end of the year. I don't know if that's possible. I do think that we should continue to explore that. And, you know, as I said, that may change in two weeks, it may change in four weeks. I just wanted to give the board different options so that you had an opportunity to discuss them and, you know, give us some direction as to how you'd like us to proceed.
Well, I'm seeking direction from you right now, though, because you, again, you gave three. Which does the administration recommend as the best option at this point?
Well, in speaking with the principals, you know, we definitely don't want to take reopening off the table. We feel that, you know, 80% of our community believes strongly that, you know, we want to return our kids to school. I hope, I believe and agree with that wholeheartedly 100%, but I do believe we have to do it in safest possible manner. And right now, we are currently in the place that we should be. So I don't want to take our reopening of schools off the table, but I also want to do it in accordance with CDC guidelines. And their single most important recommendation is six-foot distancing, and that's just not something that we can do right now at this time in our current situation.
Mr. Martin?
Several questions. Dr. Hes here. My first, my first one, the number that you gave for new cases, a 21, I think you said it was?
Yes.
Was that, how many days was that? Was that, I know historically we've been doing 14 days.
Yes, that, according to the chief, it's still 14 days.
Okay.
The numbers that we're getting from the state.
So here's my concern, number one. The new CDC indicators and thresholds for community transmission of COVID, they've changed their strategy because of the rapid change in numbers. They're now recommending you look at seven-day.
Yes, sir.
So if we were, if that 21 is for 14 days, let's say half of it is seven. Moderate transmission is 10 to 49. So we're probably right on the border between low transmission blue and moderate transmission yellow. The other, the other indicator that they're recommending we look at is the percentage of COVID tests that are positive during the past seven days. According to the state website, Milford in the last seven days, that percentage is 2.4%. Anything under 5% by CDC is considered low transmission, blue. To me, we're not in substantial or high transmission, okay? According to the CDC, one indicator is a low transmission, the second one is between low and moderate. Their guidelines between low and moderate is K-12 schools open for full in-person instruction, physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. So there's my first comment. I understand the chief is using the same statistics we've been using, but the CDC has come out with some new guidelines, so I'd like to make sure we're following the CDC recommendations to determine what status we're in. But we're clearly not substantial or high based on the new CDC guidelines. My second question, you said there, there's 14, after tonight, there's 14 active cases?
At midnight, we have five expiring, I believe, yes.
How many of those are in nursing homes?
He did not give me that information this morning.
That's important to know because of that. So, so I think we need to reach agreement. Are we following CDC guidelines or not? Because the CDC, whether you like them or not, they've changed the way they're now saying whether you're low, moderate, substantial, or high transmission. So we need to follow their guidelines. The second thing is, is we can't vote on anything tonight. We need a detailed plan that we're going to follow. Primex, our insurance carrier, requires a board-approved, detailed plan to go back to in-person learning. They further require that no one other than the board can approve any deviation from that plan. So this is what I've been asking for. We need a detailed plan. I appreciate you saying we could make one of those three decisions, but I'm still waiting to see a plan of how we.
We have a detailed plan, Mr. Martin. I was requested by the chairwoman tonight to simply give an update to the board, and she asked that I give the update. All of the principals have very detailed slides to share with the board. That's not what we were asked to do tonight. We were asked to give an update with any new information that we might have. And if you'd like the principals to present their full detailed plan that they have ready to go, I can certainly have each and every one of them do that tonight, but that's not what we were asked.
I agree. It was, I'm reacting to, we could make one of the three motions tonight. The other thing, too, is a detailed plan is not a PowerPoint presentation. We really need it in narrative form with whatever charts and graphs you want, because again, our insurance provider is requiring us to have a detailed written plan that only the board can approve and only the board can deviate. So I, I mean, I appreciate PowerPoint presentations and probably giving a PowerPoint to summarize your written plan is a good approach, but we really need to read the detailed plan. And I agree, you weren't asked to do that tonight, and I'm not asking you do it tonight, but I'm suggesting that until we see a detailed plan, I don't think we can make any motions.
So thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Martin. This is the first time that I've, I've come to the understanding. You've said detailed plan, detailed plan. You've said that a few times. I didn't know that you were looking for like a narrative, like plan like we presented after we worked with a community group of 48 people for, you know, a month. I didn't realize that you were looking for another, like basically reopening plan that's very lengthy with narratives.
Well, I'm, yeah, it's, it's.
That wasn't. That wasn't my understanding, but now I do understand that, and we can definitely turn, you know, the principal's information that they have into a narrative form. So thank you for clarifying that.
To clarify as well, Jessica, we asked you to give us an update as to where we're at. I think that you pretty much addressed where we're at is where we should be right now. So before we can turn the key and go from where we're at to where we may be, that's when we need the details and we need the data to support it, and we need the staffing to support it and the busing to support it. Those are the items that would need to be in place. But I have a question, because one of the options you gave for remaining in hybrid had a component for the secondary level where we would go to four days of live instruction. While we're waiting to return to a full live instruction, why can't we incorporate that element as well? Because that sounds wonderful.
That's, that's something we can definitely explore. Again, those are conversations that we're going to have to have with staff internally, and I believe that we're going to be meeting, you know, soon with the association. We can definitely have discussions around that, but it's definitely something we can explore.
And in that scenario, there was no change to the elementary, correct?
No, the elementary.
Did mention more room-and-zoom now, but no change really?
Room-and-zoom would only be for students who are quarantining at the elementary school so that there wouldn't be any disruption. You know, the principals, both elementary principals feel very strongly that the current model, they see students four days a week, they're in, in session, and it would be very, very challenging, just the way that, like right now, the teachers are teaching a literacy lesson in the morning and then they're teaching that same literacy lesson in the afternoon, and it would take like a complete redesign of the entire elementary program in order to move that. It wouldn't be as easy as sort of combining classes on A-B and having those streamed. It would be completely different.
Thank you. Kevin, I see your hand up. I got a message from Mrs. Zano, but she looks to be frozen again. So we'll go to Kevin.
Judy, are you back? You're back, right?
Yes.
Oh, she is?
She's back. Yeah, there was a technological issue. I think she got.
Yeah.
From active to something.
That was my problem last week.
Yeah, no, it happens. Dr. Hesanga, I appreciate that tonight was an update, and, and, and I understand that, but I have a couple, two questions, two, two general questions, I guess. Can you simplify for our constituents, what is the criteria? What are the criteria? What is the standard that, in the threshold that needs to be met in order for us to safely return to school? I mean, just in vernacular, not CDC parlance and not bureaucratic speak, but just in simple terms, what, what do our people, our parents have to understand so that we can agree with Mr. Martin that it's time to come back to school? I mean, he just identified that there seems to be a disconnect between, you know, the CDC guidelines and perhaps the numbers right now, and what, what's our threshold? Where are we right now? Substantial or moderate or high risk? In simple terms, what should parents know that when they see the numbers are such and such, or circumstances are such and such, that's when it's going to be safe to go back to school? What does it mean to be safe to return to school?
So I think Mr. Martin really began to explain that in pretty layman terms, right? So the CDC did put out new guidelines, and their, their guidelines, you know, call for, you know, low to moderate transmission, you know, around a community. So that's one thing that we're definitely looking at. Another thing that we have to take into account is staff impacts. Do we have the ability to properly staff the buildings in order to bring 80% of our students back and then also provide high-quality remote instruction for that last, that other 20% of families that have, have said that they're more interested in remaining remote for the remainder of the year? So, you know, those, those are sort of the, the key criteria that, you know, we're really looking at in terms of safety. One of the things that we struggle with is the size of our buildings and our capacity to hold the number of students that we're anticipating coming back for a full return at even three feet. So, you know, what we need to make sure of, if the CDC, number one, you know, criteria is social distancing, I want to be sure that we are in that low to moderate transmission, you know, number, and I want to make sure that our local health officials are in agreement that, you know, we can safely social distance at, you know, three feet. And Mr. Martin is correct in, you know, how he defined their social distancing guidelines, but our numbers are still, you know, on that cusp. And as of this morning, in my discussions with Chief Flaherty, you know, there's still the feeling that we are where we should be, but we are trending in the right direction. And that could be, you know, that new direction and that readiness could be two weeks from now, it could be three weeks from now. And Mr. Martin's correct, we need to have a very detailed plan and be ready to go for that option, but that option, to me, is not availed yet right now.
So just if I could make sure I understand it, because I, maybe I'm missing it. I'm hearing three criteria then. Low to moderate transmission rates, social distancing according to CDC guidelines, which we started this meeting four hours, three hours ago with Mr. Martin saying that can't be the singular sole criteria, and nobody's suggesting that it is, but the criteria remain the same on that area with that, that it's a six-foot social distancing, not three, not anything else. And then thirdly, that we have to have the adequate staffing. So that, it sounds to me like if we want, as board members want to explain to our constituents, what are the three criteria? Those are really the three, aren't they?
Yes, and then there's a fourth, you know, absenteeism, right? So our student absenteeism rate has been another criteria that we have been looking at. That hasn't seemed to be a significant issue for us, but I think the other three that we talked about are really key areas we need to continue to look at. And I think what we all need to understand is, even though I'm saying, you know, we're are where we need to be right now, you know, to Mr. Martin's point, that could change a week from now, it could change two weeks from now. What we need to be sure is that we're ready for when that change happens. And I believe based on the detailed plans that I saw the principals put together, we are going to be ready for that possibility if we need to be.
So consistent with that thread, I think you would agree that if the district makes the decision, if the board makes the decision to go full return, we don't want to be in a situation shortly thereafter where the numbers trend in the other direction, because I think you, you're on the, on the record as having said, once we go full return, we can't go back to hybrid.
We cannot. We're going, it's, we're going to have to then revert back to remote. And, you know, just like we did, you know, in situations in the fall, we may, we had a two-week remote period for a school, you know, after the holidays, we had a, like four or five-week remote period. Conditions. It, it, it won't be permanent, right? It, it would be for a period of time. But it will not, we, we cannot transition back to hybrid. So yes, you're correct.
And then the last area of inquiry, I just wanted to follow up on a number that you recited. You, I think you said that 80% of the community want full return. But is that based on the academic choice form that was conducted in January? Or is that from some other source? And the reason I ask that is because as we went through the academic choice form information from each of the building principals, approximately a third of the families in each of the buildings didn't respond to the form at all. So that 80% is 80% of the respondents, but that's not 80% of the, of our constituents, is it?
You're correct, Ms. St. Ange. It was 80% of the respondents, yeah.
And we're missing a third of our, of our school district, of our school district's families did not respond.
That, that may have changed in the last couple of weeks. I will have to get those numbers updated from the principals. Because I knew they were doing further outreach after that meeting.
So then my next question would be, why wouldn't, based on the three proposals or suggested motions, and I agree with Mr. Martin and I think your earlier comment that we don't have to take any action tonight. But, but based on what you just said, additional outreach from the building principals, why not ask the families the same questions that you've asked us tonight? Whether, and, and ask all, with respect to all three modalities? Because there might be a constituency of, of people in this community that agree that maybe we ought to stay hybrid for a lot of different reasons through the end of this academic year and not switch to four different academic modalities in the span of 10 months. Among other, other reasons, I won't list them off. But if we're talking about surveys and you're going to say that 80% of the community want to return to school and it's really not 80%, it's 80% of those that responded. Well, how about doing a survey that gives our families all three options? What you did last summer, you did it last summer. I'm just wondering why not do it now?
Like I said, you know, you could make a, a fourth motion and that could be to direct us to do a survey, you know, and then come back to you at the next board meeting with those results by all means. But again, I.
You're going to have the same results. You're going to have, you're not going to get everybody to respond.
But it's a different question, Joe, because there would be a third option. Some people, I think there's an, I think there is a silent group of people in this community that would frankly just assume the stability of remaining in the hybrid model for the balance of the year and not take the risk that we'll be in April or May and then have to go remote again. And I'm thinking particularly of our senior class and, and so forth that, you know, my daughter graduated last year and went through that full remote graduation time period and Mr. Prom and all that other stuff. At least in hybrid, we can still accommodate most of everything we're trying to accomplish here for our, for our children. Is it the best academic modality, as, as Mr. Martin pointed out earlier? Absolutely not. But it might be the best that we can do for the balance of this year.
I think that you bring up a great point, Kevin. And I think that Jessica, we should make that motion to do. But if you do a survey, I, I would like you to do what Mr. Mark, what Mr. St. Ange is suggesting and give the three options that you just gave this board with the updated criteria. Knowing that what's important, we need to be six feet apart. We need to be at this transmission rate, absenteeism and staffing. Based on that, and then let the people pick. Because I kind of agree that it's, it's seeming like at this point, perhaps giving 120% to hybrid for the remainder of this academic year is looking more likely to be the best case scenario. Simply because if we're going to go toward trying to get back in school, but then we have to get kicked back out again and then we're losing more time. But again, I think that, and I don't know if there's a way to incentivize people to actually respond. Perhaps, you know, do a blast, do it on the website, do it on the Facebook page. But I, I think that that piece of data is going to be really important for us to make any decision in two weeks. Steve, would that suffice where you're at?
Here's my concern. We can't do all three. The administration needs to know, if we're back full time, will you go full time? Or will you want remote? They can, they need to plan.
That's it.
They go out, they give me three options. They're not going to know how to plan because you're going to have a third group that you can't meet. And the other problem I have, Kevin, and this, this is what's really frustrating me. It, it is really frustrating me. We keep saying we have to worry about the people that want to stay hybrid. Well, damn it, we need to have, worry about the parents and the kids who want to be in school.
They are, Steve. They are in school. They're in school two days a week. They are in school.
You tell me that's the best education.
It's not, no, of course not.
Then we need to do what we can do. Subject, again, I believe we're more in the low and moderate transmission, not.
You may be right. You may be right.
The six foot mark seems to be the big, you know, we have a lot of students. We have small classrooms. As we move into warmer months, we could potentially move some classes outside. We could utilize space in the gymnasium. I mean, they're, they're, I definitely think that now would be more of a time that we could pursue those types of options.
Let the CDC, we need a plan. We need a. CDC says to the extent possible, the six feet. This is only if you're in the low to moderate. Clearly, if you're above that, it's a minimum of six feet. And what they say is if you can't maintain the six feet in the classroom, then you need to maintain the social distancing between your classrooms. They're calling, I think they call it pods. So again, what you want to do is you want to, from a contract tracing. That's what I'm saying. They've, they've learned a lot in the last 10 months. We need to relook at everything using what they've just come out with because this is, this is what they're now saying is safe.
So can I, can I just, can I just make one little qualification? You know, it, it's, it's easy to say that, you know, we're just going to transition everything into pods, but the high school schedule does not work that way. You, you, the high school schedule will not allow for students to little, literally move in pods. We discussed that back in August and July about putting a pod format in the high school. And we could not do it. It wasn't that we didn't know that back then, Mr. Martin. We knew that back then. We, we couldn't run a high school schedule with the electives and the number of students, you know, and with the number of levels that we have, move them in pods. It's much easier to do that at the elementary level than at the secondary level. Same thing with the middle school. So there are things that we can do and there's things that we are not going to be able to do. The high school schedule has already been set. We do have a plan. We have a very detailed plan to move into a reopening. You want it in a narrative form in a booklet. We're happy to put it into that format. And many of the things that the CDC has recommended, we are already doing. What we're looking, we, we are. What we're looking to do is just to see the numbers go down a little bit. And like I said, that could happen in two weeks. It could happen in three weeks. And you're absolutely correct. We can social distance at three feet. And we will be doing all of the things, all of the mitigation strategies that the CDC recommendations that came out this weekend. We are doing those things. And so I, I am completely comfortable if we're, as we continue to see these numbers trend downward. We're only talking about like, I think it's going to be within weeks. But we also have to consider this. I just want to say, we also have to consider the fact that, you know, if those numbers don't trend, you know, a little bit more between now and, I mean, we're looking at April break is going to be here in a flash. At what point though, then I have to ask the board, is making that shift kind of for not, what point in the year, you know, to make that significant shift? Does it matter even if it's for three weeks? Or do we still want to do that? That's also a question I think that has to be answered.
I would agree with that. And, and again, I'm not saying that tomorrow we're going to be full time in person. What I'm asking for is the detailed plan. Oh, by the way, Jessica, make sure that plan also includes all, not just the principals and the academics and the nurses, but also the building and grounds. Because that plan also has to cover PPEs and, and all of the other mitigation strategies as well. So all, all I'm saying though is the numbers are dropping so rapidly.
They are.
I want us to be in a position, I would love two weeks from now for Jessica to come in and say, hey, the new guidelines are here. We're in mostly in low and Fire Chief says we're all set to go. And then she says, okay, I think we're ready and it's safe. Here's the plan, will you approve? Because we do have to approve a plan for our insurance carrier.
Yes, and, and I will have, I will have a narrative put into, you know, essentially you're asking me for an updated reopening plan from the beginning of the year. Okay, now I know exactly what it is that you're looking for. We're happy to turn the, the plans that we have into that for your review.
Thank you.
The deadline for that plan was March 1st, Steve. And I think that was at your request. That was your original motion several weeks ago. So we're on our, we're on par for, we're on course for that and that's fine. And, and I think we're all animated about this because we're all passionate about the subject and want to do what we believe is right. And, and, and so Steve, I appreciate the debate that you and I have had. I have to tell you though, I didn't appreciate, you know, and I'm saying it to you directly. I didn't appreciate your comments in the public comment that we somehow set up the nurses in, in the last board meeting with a particular narrative. There was no setup. It was a question and they were asked questions. This comes on the heels of 10 months of listening to other experts and other people to talk about things. It was the first opportunity that we all had and I appreciate the superintendent making them available at our request. Nobody had thought to ask them before. So for you to suggest that we somehow did that intentionally with some slant or whatever, I thought was frankly inappropriate. There was no slant there. There was nothing intended there. It was a simple question. And the fact remains, the CDC guideline still says six feet. And a lot of what the superintendent is telling us about the current trends and the reason the district has been successful with the hybrid model that we have is because we've been following those CDC guidelines. And so we should continue to follow them. And you're, you make a good point. If our transmission rate has dropped to low to moderate, let's get, let's get that information. But we don't know that yet. In fact, we, we know the opposite right now based on the information we've been provided. So let's stay the course. Let's get our plan on March 1st and we'll, we'll reengage again then.
That's the plan. And hopefully the numbers will be better at that point too.
Before we go into public comment, we do have a request to bring before the board. So I am going to ask for a suspension of the rules in order to add to the agenda. My school is going to need to purchase furniture in order to be able to do a full reopen. And that amount is more than I am allowed to approve without the board's approval. So I would just like to give the opportunity, if the board would allow for the high school principal just to present her request for furniture.
Certainly. We can make a motion. Do you want to make a motion, Steve, or can we just say yes?
Since all of that be covered by federal funds, I, I.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Will the COVID funds kick in for that?
I can, while Jane might be able to answer that or I can.
I, I, I happen to know that the COVID funds can be used for that. But, but Jane, are you there?
I'm, I'm here. Yes, they could be used for that if that's, if that's the direction we take with it. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to present.
I, I don't even know, quite frankly, Shelly, if we, we need a presentation. If, if you need to purchase, open up the schools and the feds are going to pay for it. I'm okay with it.
And it's an investment and we get to keep the furniture after? All good. What's the bottom line amount that you need?
Well, so can I, I'd like to show it to you.
I said I worked, she wants to show it.
Because, because if we're going to use COVID funds, I still have $25,000 in my high school budget for furniture. We had originally last year, when I presented the need for furniture to the school board as part of my budget, it was a five year plan to try to replace the furniture in the high school. And so with our new budget for next year, we took out that furniture. So this would be an opportunity for me to spend that money for the furniture as well. So let me see if I can open this up for you guys. Are you able to see this?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'll try to make it quick because I know that it's late. So we are 150 desks short. In order to be able to accommodate for lunches, we would use tables in the lunchrooms. And so we would be short 150 desks in the high school. So we do have 25,000 budgeted. We have gotten some quotes from two different vendors of, of this company called VS. And we've also gone through a consortium, a buying consortium that gives us the most competitive rates. So we also had another company bring us some samples. And we did choose to go with this company because we thought that it was a very high quality product that would allow for flexible seating, kids to move around. These are just some details that you will have later on the quality. There's two different types of chairs. These chairs are a thicker plastic, so they're not going to bend and break and crack. And so we have, we have narrowed it down to two different chairs. So if we were to get 150 sets at 257 a set, it would be 38,640 with a freight of 3,064, leading us to $41,704. And as you know, I have 25,000 of my own dollars to spend. And that was the lowest of the two quotes. If we go with 200 sets, I think that is the best way to go. That's my recommended because we get free freight at that point. And because this company comes with the desks all completely assembled, and I've already talked to Bill Cooper and he said that we could unload them, take the sleeves off that keep them from getting scratched in transit and we would save another 2,400 that way. So basically, if I wasn't using COVID funds, I would be able to come up with it through pulling from three different lines. Our, my new furniture line, which I already had to begin with, my new equipment line, which I already had, and a general supply line. So that's what I'm asking for. And definitely we can explore using COVID funds as well. If we, if we looked at it that we needed 150 desks for COVID reasons to, in order to provide seating, if we were to go to a full in model, then I could spend the 26,500 and equip even more classrooms with desks, which would be phenomenal. The reason why I needed to get through to you tonight is this company has a quick ship. When I first started talking to them two weeks ago, it was a two week quick ship. When I talk to them today, it's up to four weeks. And so if we're going to even entertain being able to return in full by April 1st, we need to get desks ordered ASAP.
Why wouldn't we go with the 200? It's not that much difference in cost.
Right, yeah. So I think, I mean, I think that that's the way to go. It's because we're saving the, the freight on it. And if we buy 150, we save $6 per set by ordering in, in a larger quantity. So I'd like to make a motion to approve your request.
I like to amend it to 200?
Yes, for 200. Yeah, you, I mean, that's what, yeah, the request for, to purchase 200 sets.
I second it.
Open for discussion. By roll call vote, Jove Tulley.
Hi.
Steve Martin.
Hi.
Judy Zano.
Hi.
Kevin St. Ange.
Hi.
Holly Talaba, I as well. The motion passes 5-0.
Get your chairs. Holly, can I ask a follow up question of the superintendent? Or maybe Jane? I, I know Jane was looking for some elementary school desks as well in order to implement their plan. Did you find them, Jane? Or do we need to purchase some more for the elementary?
Bill Cooper actually investigated the basement of one of our buildings. I believe we found about 40. And he contacted Oyster River, who was giving away desks. And I think he got 32 that are really nice ones. So I know he has about 70, a little over 70. So I think we might be okay, but I'm not positive, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to go to public comment.
One quick question before you, or observation before you go to public comment, if I may, Ms. Talaba. I'm not sure if this is the. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place or time or otherwise, but I'd be remiss if we closed this first public meeting of the school board since the passing of Dan Murray, a longtime basketball coach here in the district, well-respected in the community, well-respected member of our school community. And I think it's appropriate that we take a moment and acknowledge his contributions to our athletic program and our school, our school community as well. And I would extend my regards and sympathies to the Murray family.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will go to public comment. Mike McLean.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Mike McLean, 5 Webster Street. In early, you brought up about making some changes to public comment. And my concern is that even if we extend public comment, it's only a public comment session. I think some of the community, and I've been mentioning this last year and even this year, and just had a conversation over the weekend about this, is why doesn't the school board, I would recommend they do a town hall-type meeting instead of a public comment. That way, their questions can be answered as well by the school board. And it can be just like a very easygoing town hall type of format. And you can still have time limits as well, like a five-minute time limit, anything like that as well. But that also goes along with the strategic plan, too, and where it states in there that by 2024, we're going to strive to become an example to other school districts for developing strong community engagement to support in educational opportunities for students. And this would be a great way to do that. And that would give the community members time to ask you questions and give you time as well to answer questions that you can answer. Obviously, there are questions that can't be answered, and people would have to accept that those questions can't be answered, unfortunately.
Thank you so much. This was on the agenda. You might have come to the meeting late, but Mr. St. Ange actually made a motion to have such a meeting, and we will be scheduling it very soon. It will be an open Q and A session where we will elongate the time. So thank you. It was addressed, and you must have missed that portion of the meeting.
I did hear that, but my concern was where our policy is not set up as a Q and A. So if
We voted for a special meeting, though, to be a Q and A.
So that would be more set up like a town hall forum then, where it's a back and forth? Okay, that's what I just wanted to check on, because I think that's a great way, and I think that should be more of a regular thing to engage community members, because that is a vital part to our school system here. So, and I think that's a great way to build a relationship with the community, to have that dialogue back and forth. And I think that's very important. And I think that's where a lot of people understand that, you know, during public comment, they can comment, but they do also want to have those questions answered. And I think that's just an extremely important part.
Thank you. And I apologize for responding, because this is not Q and A, but I just wanted to let you know that that is what we voted on tonight.
All right, you're fine. I just wanted to make sure, because I kept understanding as a regular school board meeting with extended comments. So I may have misunderstood that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Susan Smith.
Thank you. Susan Smith, Annan Drive. Three comments, one on the surveys for back-to-school. My understanding from the presentation by the principals was that for anybody who didn't respond to the survey, they were counted in the format that they're currently in. So if they were hybrid, I think they were counted as full in. And if they were remote, they stayed remote, so that the 80% is probably more accurate than what was suggested. Then regarding right-to-know requests and legal fees, I think that the board would, you know, the way you're going to get the legal fees down is by following the laws regarding how you post your meetings. Non-public meetings have to be part of a public meeting. They can't be posted as non-public meetings. You know, taking notes, having meeting notes available within the appropriate amount of time, things like that. So if those things were happening, the way they're supposed to be happening, I don't think you'd have as many right-to-know requests, and you wouldn't have spent $76,000 in the first six months of the school year on legal. And then my third point was just to, it's kind of a question, you don't have to answer it. But I'm curious if Mr. St. Ange is going to accept a write-in campaign for the three-year school board position despite the fact that he committed to not running for the board when he accepted the interim position.
Thank you for your comments. Wendy Sage Matsus. Sorry, Chris, I'll get you next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. I think you're my new hero, by the way. Thank you very much for checking into the new CDC guidelines and kind of passing on that many of those have changed. I'm going to preface my comment tonight with letting you know that I do work in the healthcare industry, senior living to be exact. I know COVID. I know policy is changing. I know CDC guidelines. But what I know most of all is how much this pandemic has taken away from my kids and many others. The surveys need to stop. I think the public has been heard. I don't know how much more exploring needs to be done. That'll just take more time away from a plan, and it's time for a return-to-school plan. Holly, you stated earlier that this board's job is to ensure every student has access to an adequate education. And at this point, I do believe this district is failing in that effort. Kevin, I appreciate your proposal of a public comment session. I think it's a great idea. And to that end, you said that it's what the public wants. The public has also spoken, and we want a return-to-school plan. I think in giving a return-to-school plan, you still give that option for the kids and the parents who need that full-in-school return to be there, and others can stay remote. The full-in person should be your goal, and you should be working tirelessly to make that happen, not for more exploring. I do feel you've got three months left to make this right for our students at the bare minimum for these high school seniors. Give them something to hang their hat on. At this point, I have to say, our family is probably interested in House Bill 20, because unless something changes, I don't know how much we can continue to want to stay in this district. And I'll tell you that our students, our kids, are not the type of students you want to see leaving your district. As for the staff, I hope that they get on board. I hope they understand that there's a job out there that they were hired to do. And if an in-school or a return-to-school plan is made, then that's what they have to be working towards. Our daughter, like many other kids, you know, has lost some precious time here. We have a high school student. We have an elementary school student. We have two students who graduated from Milford High School and are very successful in their college endeavors. I've watched a lot of these kids flounder over the past few months. But I've also watched them go on. And where I've watched them go is to the gym, to the soccer fields, to be with friends, so that their mental health doesn't suffer even more. And most recently, I've watched my own daughter enter the essential workforce. So she can go to work, but she can't fully go to school. And I think that that's something that needs to be corrected for so many of our students. Thank you for listening. Please get to work on that plan.
Next up is Chris. Chris? Not sure if your hand was up from before, or there you are. Chris, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, last call for Chris. I'm going to come back to you. Oh, Chris, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, I will come back to you, Chris. Next up is Marcia Brew.
Hi, Marcia Brew, 11 Foxmore Circle. Thank you for the great consideration. What I'm still not understanding is why the par sub rate is not the same as the teacher rate. They are working with the most at-risk population for less money when you are a sub. I'm confused why this didn't get set to the same rate. What I believe what will happen now is subs will choose not to fill those roles because it is less money. Also, it's not unusual to be a sub in multiple roles in the same building, such as a teacher and a para. It would be nice for that same consistency across the board. I hope that can be reviewed again. I'm also disappointed that our surrounding towns weren't taking into more considerations. For five more minutes to a neighboring town, we stand to make considerable more weekly at those districts. Instead, we were compared to Litchfield and Nashua, which is considerably further away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is, I'm not skipping Mr. Vasler. I'm keeping him for the end. Next up is Melissa Latanda.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to speak on behalf of my senior daughter. I would just like to say that as a senior, she has received no accolades as being a senior. It has been a very difficult year, and she has transitioned between being remote to hybrid to remote and another transition to being full remote. I hope that we have all of our ducks in a row in order to return her to a full, remote learning environment. I think that this is really imperative. I don't know if I have permission to speak as an educator. Ms. Chairwoman?
Public comment is intended for residents to speak. I'm sorry, it's not, the purpose isn't for district employees to speak.
Okay, I completely understand that and respect that position. So I would just like to say that I would hope that if returning to full in-return school model, that we have taken in consideration the fact that my daughter, for instance, is an honors and AP student, and she has, at this point, not received any full in-school instruction. I would like to think that if she did return, that she would receive safe and full in return in
Melissa, I believe that you may have been kicked off. Is anyone hearing her? Okay. So I'm sorry, Melissa, just for the sake of time, I'm going to move on to the next speaker. If you want to get back in line, please do so. Jenny C. Christ.
Hi, thanks for taking my comments. I think it'd be really nice to know how many or which of the board members have actually taken time to testify in front of the legislative committees about any of the proposed bills regarding education in New Hampshire. And it's very unfortunate that Mr. St. Ange doesn't realize that the New Hampshire school boards are an instrumentality of our state legislature and as such have every right to voice their position on all proposed legislation, especially regarding education. At the very least, board members should represent their constituents' wishes above all, considering that this legislation will devastate our town's ability to provide an adequate education to most Milford students. If it does pass and appears to directly contradict, this appears to directly contradict his premise completely. It does have everything to do with your position on the board. It is concerning that he's running to stay on the board and doesn't realize this after two full months as a board member. And it'd be really a lot more reassuring if he would consult the NHSBA about this, their website, their attorneys, and take part in a bunch more of their new board member seminars and workshops. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Melissa now. I see, so Melissa, you just need to unmute yourself, please. Melissa, if you're there, you just need to unmute yourself. If not, I'm going to move on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not sure how much you heard of my last public comment.
The part about your daughter and accolades and being in school and returning to classes and having live instruction?
Okay, yeah, just in regards to her being a senior, I think it's been a very difficult year in regards to her catapulting between remote to hybrid to remote, to now potentially returning to full remote, for full, I'm sorry, in return. I think that's very difficult for the senior class. I hope that as a board and as an admin, they will start to acknowledge the seniors and start to, in some way, acknowledge them as seniors, as there has been none acknowledgement as far as this point into the school year. And then my second comment was in regards to speaking as a school staff member, which I believe, Holly, you did not agree to at this point.
Yeah, it's just against the policy and the purpose of the meeting. I do apologize. Perhaps a good venue might be the open Q and A in two weeks.
Absolutely, and I totally agree with that. I would just like to comment in that forum in regards to making sure that we adhere to the protocols in regards to returning to full remote and the capacity of students in that return mode. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Gus Stillwagon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all I wanted to say was if we are going to look at a full in-person plan, that you do something for the seniors. If we're going back full in-person, I would expect to have a senior prom, a junior prom, a normal graduation. Melissa hit on kind of what I was looking at, is these seniors haven't been recognized at all. They went through a cruddy half a junior year and now a cruddy senior year, and all they're doing is getting, there's been no accolades towards the seniors. So I would hope that if we're looking at a full in-person return, that we have a plan for a normal prom and a normal graduation and normal senior week and things like that. Thank you.
Ms. Talaba, I just want to respond to that really briefly. You know, the CDC, the new guidelines that they just released specifically stated that the priority is instruction, returning to school. We have plenty of senior events planned. My hope is that we are going to get to some normalcy in the spring. But I just want to be clear to everybody, our absolutely number-one priority is to get kids back in classrooms. That has to be. All of the other things, and they even said athletics and all of the other wonderful things that make up a great experience in school are secondary to getting kids back into the classroom. So I just want to be clear about what our priority has to be. And that doesn't mean we aren't in the process of planning great events for seniors, and we're going to continue planning those great events. But to say if we return, that automatically means we're going to be doing in-person proms and in-person other large gatherings. I just want to be cautious about that, and I don't want to make any promises that we are unable to keep safely. Thank you.
And I understand that. I totally understand that. But if we can go, my problem is, is if we can go back to school in person, then we should allow a normal graduation. We should allow proms. If we can do, have everybody back in, then we should allow everybody to get, move on and do the things we used to do. And I totally understand where you're coming from, Jess. I get it. It's just, it's disheartening, two years in a row, to have a junior and a senior. In both years, they get nothing. But thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Boden Zretzky.
Thank you for letting me speak again. So just in response to the question about surveys, I have to echo the previous commenter's frustration. I think the reason that you probably didn't get a lot of answers in the most recent surveys it may have been that people have survey fatigue. Parents spoke a long time ago, back in March. fully 80% wanted in-person schooling. That's the truth. No, you're shaking your head, but you're wrong. And 57% were willing to take whatever risk was required to get their children back into school. So that's the fact. Now, we keep taking surveys to try to get the answer that we want. I have to tell you that seeing what Dr. Huzanga presented as the options was a bitter disappointment. There was nothing on that sheet of paper that had anything to do with in-person, full-on return-to-school, five days a week. I've got, I've got a sophomore left, I mean, a junior in school. He missed his second half of his sophomore year, missed his entire beginning of his junior year, the most important pieces of his high school career. He's a STEM student. He's a, he's never going to make this stuff back. And so in terms of the surveys, the parents have spoken very clearly, and I don't think taking any more surveys is necessary. In addition, I really would like to see a more detailed plan where we are going to be hitting the ground running April 1st. Have we done any benchmarks against the other institutions and other schools in the state? It seems like we're trying to make this all up from the ground up by ourselves. And I would think that right now, there are probably other school districts that are going through exactly the same thing we are. Have we seen what they're doing? What are other states doing? What are other states that have full-on education going on, full-time? What are they doing? What are they doing right? Germany has had in-school instruction since May. I don't hear of any children in Germany dying en masse. I've not heard of any teachers dying en masse. So therefore, I really think that we should be a lot more aggressive about where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Natalie?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, we are at 24 minutes of public comment.
Okay, all right. So you know what? Based on that, Natalie's already spoken. I was remiss in that I was supposed to add to our agenda, but I forgot, a statement from Mr. Basileir as the Milford School Board moderator, just getting the support of the school board for holding the upcoming elections at the high school instead of the middle school. So I respectfully like to request that Mr. Basileir be allowed to talk briefly. Mr. Basileir?
Yes, thank you. Holly, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yes, I just want to, we are planning to hold the town and school district elections at the high school. In the past, we've always done it at the middle school. But this year, given that we've already successfully held two elections at the high school, and given the fact that the high school has the space to allow us appropriate physical distancing, we'd like to be able to use the high school again for the March elections in 2021. Now, I don't know if the board needs to take a formal position on this or not, but I just wanted to bring that up. In talking with a number of people, including Jaylee Davis, it seems like it'll be acceptable to have, to hold the election at the high school instead of at the middle school. But again, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's why I bring it up tonight, Holly, and just ask for your input. And hopefully, you're okay that we can hold the election at the high school instead of the middle school.
Thank you, Mr. Basileir. And just so everyone on the board knows, Jaylee Davis is in support of that. And I believe previously, Bill Cooper has been in support of that as well. So if, would you like us to make a motion, Pete, or is that not necessary?
It may not be necessary. I mean, it's a day off. Well, it's, the students are not in session at least that day.
Just sports, maybe.
And to use a building. It's just that, unlike in the past, we're going to be using the high school if it's okay. So if it's just a nodding consensus, it's up to you as to whether you want to take a vote or not.
I think Mr. Martin wants to say something. Steve, did you?
We don't have to take a vote, especially if the high school has already okayed it. I mean, they basically handle the rental, although there's no fee of the facility.
So it sounds like you're good to go, Mr. Basileir. Sorry you had to wait till 10:39.
That's quite all right. We appreciate your help, and we certainly appreciate the support that Ms. Davis and Mr. Cooper provide and their staff. So I'm sure we'll have a good election in just about three weeks' time.
Thank you, Mr. Basileir. Mr. Saint Ange?
Just while Mr. Basileir and if Ms. Davis is still on the phone, on the line, I'm just hoping that, consistent with what I've said in the, is this, is this election to be done in the gym or in the cafeteria?
We, because we pretty much, I think, registered all the new voters that are in town back in November. And given historical numbers for the town elections, we don't generally register any more than 50 new voters on Election Day for the town and school elections. So no, we are not going to be using the cafeteria.
Just want to protect the gym floor, sir. I'm partial to basketball courts and wood floors, and we're going to have people coming in in March with salt and sand on their boots and shoes and stuff. I just hope Mr. Cooper can work with Ms. Davis and protect our wood floors. That's all.
Yes, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure that they will. You bring up a good point and one that we need to be cautious of. But absolutely, we're not intending to use the cafeteria. We'll use the main lobby. Voters will go through the main lobby, through the gym, and then out the two doors at the far end of the gym.
Long as we protect our basketball courts. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And to echo Mr. Saint Ange's earlier sentiment, you know, the district suffered a great loss with Dan Murray. And it's never easy to say goodbye. Without further ado, however, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Public comment's over?
We went four minutes over, yes. But stay tuned, because in two weeks, we'll be holding an interactive Q and A session.
Second the motion to adjourn?
All those in favor by roll call, Mr. Thule?
Aye.
Mr. Saint Ange?
Aye.
Mrs. Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Holly Talapa is aye as well. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.